Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular committee of the whole meeting for Monday, July 27th. The Shaw Auditorium. I'd like to first note that clerk of record tonight is Ms. Donna Smith, and we are calling this meeting to order, and I want to recognize that we're on the traditional territory of the name of First Nations people. First item of business is the introduction of late items. Ms. Smith?
Your worship, this evening we have three late items on the addendum. The first one, to the Beban Park Central Facility Development Opportunities, please add a delegation from Ms. Leslie Coltish, Nanaimo Equestrian Association. Under item eight, that was item eight A, item eight C, subdivision control bylaw, proposed amendments to the Manual of Engineering Standards and Specifications, please add delegation Mr. Leon Cake. And item eight D, remove the Collery Dam Park Improvement Process and Action Plan from the agenda this evening.
Thank you very much. Does counsel have any other items? Seeing none, looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda as amended. Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Thank you. Discussion, seeing none, call the question halls in favor, opposed, motion carries. Next item is adoption of minutes for the May 9 and for the May 30 meetings of the regular committee of the whole. Could I have a mover for adoption, please? Counselor Hong, thank you, seconded by, do we have a seconder? Counselor Brennan, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question halls in favor, opposed, motion carries. There are no presentations. The next item, item number six, is under administration, and that is the strategic plan update. And the purpose is to obtain counsel direction on their strategic priorities for the next three years. We have a presentation by Mr. Chris Schulberg, the Acting Director of Culture Heritage and Strategic Relationships, and Mr. Philip Cooper, the Communications Manager. Gentlemen.
All right. Good evening. So, tonight, we're going to quickly walk through the updated strategic plan, and of course, all of you are in a strong position to know very intimately what this document's all about, so maybe I'll just speak more for those of us that have joined us tonight on where we are with this particular document and what the next steps look like. So, as you know, the strategic plan, as it was originally written, expired in 2015, and that puts you in a position of having to come up with a new or updated vision for the remainder of your term. So, you have been meeting over the last several months to review what was done before, and about three or four weeks ago, you had an update from staff, walking us through all of the different achievements and successes that were done with that plan. And tonight, we're going to just quickly walk through the updated version for the remaining time of 2016 through 2018. So, there's a chart up on the wall, or up on the slide, and at the top, we have the official Nanaimo vision from official community plan, sorry, and below that, there is the City of Nanaimo Corporate Strategic Plan, and that's the item we're talking about tonight. Within that document, there are a total of five values. Four of those values remain as recorded in the original strategic plan from 2012, 2015. There's been an additional value added called active lifestyle, and that's on the far right-hand side. Below that, there are five council priorities, and these items are reasonably new. They're drawn from conversations both amongst yourselves and the community as a whole. But the main and most important thing here is, in addition to having a title, they now have thorough definitions. So, when you read the update plan, each of these has been defined as having some substance, and of course, you were involved in that conversation. Finally, below that, there are a listing of five projects and two initiatives, and I think for the purpose of where you're going and where you wish to head, this is where the substance is. This is where certainly the public will see work undertaken, and that's divided into the items that are listed there. I'll quickly read them out. There's a project involving Number One Port Drive, South Downtown Waterfront, Beban Park Facilities Redevelopment Master Plan, Sports and Entertainment Center, Waterfront Walkway, and the Georgia Avenue Pedestrian Cycling Bridge. In addition to that, there are two initiatives, the property acquisition and affordable housing. So, before you is a staff report containing a recommendation, and I believe that would probably cover it off from my perspective. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no, I didn't have anything additional to add.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There's a staff recommendation on page 14. Can we have a mover and a seconder for one and two to get it on the floor?
I'll move.
Counselor Fuller, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. Thank you very much. A couple of comments and then an opinion. My comments would be that the work that's been engaged in the first six months of this year is commendable. The amount and volume of effort that's gone into the detail and the analytics and the information that's contained in here for the future of our community is and has been absolutely imperative. Staff bringing us together as a council to have a common goal and objective that we can actually have literal in front of us for things to work on and work toward in making our community a more vibrant and responsible place to do what we love to do right here in Nanaimo. Will this undertaking be a work in progress and be fluid? I'm certain that it is. There's five major projects that have been identified. It doesn't put the other projects that have been discussed previously somewhere else. They haven't been parched off somewhere else. But this gives us direction, and this to me is, this to me is what we're supposed to be doing. This to me is leadership. This to me is identifying the things that we think we may be delinquent or deficient in, in our infrastructure of facilities and other activities that we would all like to have our children and our children's children. This to me is a huge document and a huge statement, the strategic plan. And I just want, my last, so the couple of comments, as I said, and then an opinion. We weren't thinking that we were going to be able to get here in June, six months ago. We weren't thinking that we could do a core services review, a strategic plan, have that stewardship and leadership and the guidance to get to where we are right now, and now the rubber is going to hit the road. Now we have to roll up the sleeves and really, really get to work. But trust me, that the work that's been done to get us here, I think, has sets us up for this council to work diligently towards some common goals in the greater good of our community, and that, to me, is why we're here. And I just want to commend and say thank you and compliments to those people that have worked a heck of a lot harder and put more time and energy and resources into this than I have, but I really like the report. I really like where we're going, and I look forward to getting to work on the good stuff now. So, thanks very much for everything that's been done, and I'll be supporting both recommendations.
Thank you. Counselor Kip?
Oh, thank you very much. I'd be amiss to not tell the public that's here tonight that we are going to have a town hall. That's part of the motion tonight in front of us. We're going to have a town hall to have public input. We've added the one value to what we had from a strategic plan before, and I'd like to say that I think it's, this is the special projects that the community's looked at and talked to council about over the years. And like Counselor Bestwick, and I'll pair it some of the words, it is a direction that we're taking, and it is giving us the ability to focus and have staff focus on some of the issues that we believe are our values and some of the priorities. And I'm quite happy that we're moving this forward, and it come very quickly when we sat down and did a long session on what we thought about for our community. So, I'm pleased with the motion that has come forward, and I have to commend staff for the workshops we've had and the time they've spent with us. And I like the rising sun. That was nice. Thank you. I thought that was the end of, I thought that was the end of Counselor Bestwick's speech.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I also would like to acknowledge the work that staff has put into helping council come to this point, and I certainly agree with Counselor Bestwick and Counselor Kip. This is an extremely important document. I'm just really enthused that we have gotten to this point, and it was not easy, and it took several day-long sessions, but they were collaborative. They involved good discussion, and I think this is clear. I think it's crisp, and I really like personally the community values, especially adding the fifth one, as was mentioned. I like the priorities and the projects. And again, as Counselor Bestwick indicated, that's not to say that other projects will disappear, but we have identified projects that we really want to focus on, and this is council moving forward and starting to do things for the benefit of this community. So, I'm very excited about this. Again, thanks to staff for their time in helping us with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hong?
Thank you. I also wanted to congratulate staff on the amount of work that was actually put in this year. It's been a challenging year, that's for sure. We did a core review, which was phenomenal. You know, we got this strategic update done. We're doing community, committee restructuring. We got corporate restructuring going on within this year. It's been a lot of work for staff. I wish we had this, got this part done, actually last year, but I'm happy that we did get it done in, at the speed that we did, so I will support the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller?
Yeah, I too have to really thank staff for the amount of work that they put in on this, and, you know, as people read in the papers, our staff levels are down from what they have been in the past, but it shows you the quality of staff that we do have, and that they've been able to put this together in such a short amount of time. You also have to thank council for the amount of work that they've done. I mean, you know, we have done several full-day sessions and other sessions and really gotten into it, and it's been a phenomenal process. I think this council is doing a great job. A year and a half in, and we've had a core review. We're doing our strategic plan, our strategic priorities. Governance is changing. Staffing is changing. Committees are changing. We've accomplished a heck of a lot in the last year and a half. So, don't believe everything you read, because this is a fantastic council to be sitting on. Sure, we have our problems, but this is a great council, and I am really looking forward to the town hall when other people can come and give feedback on what we are doing, with the strategic plan and our priorities. That's big for me, is the community involvement. I love seeing so many people out in the audience here, too, and thank you to the public for your feedback as well.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt?
Thank you. Well, I am really relieved that we now finally have a strategic plan, some strategic direction. It's ours. It's this council's. It makes sense to me, and so I'm very pleased to have this document that we can now guide our work from. It sets out some rather lofty goals, I think, and it won't all happen overnight. It may not happen in our term, but it's a start. Some of these goals are long-term goals. They're not going to happen right away, but the start of them is going to happen during our tenure, and having them start is a good thing. There's lots left to do. We've been working so hard over the last while, and there's a lot left to do, and it doesn't have to do with the strategic plan so much now as the core review. We certainly have to put our minds to that as well and have a look at it and decide how we're going to implement or not the recommendations that are there. I've had a lot of discussion with people in the community regarding both the strategic plan and the core review, and what I would say to the public is, we're working on it, and to be patient. This is all stuff that takes a long time to do. It's not easy work, but it's good work, and it will lay a wonderful foundation for our community. So, thanks to staff, a lot of hard work. You've managed to corral the cats and get us all together and get us on the same page, and that's a good thing, and it wasn't an easy thing to do either, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I too would like to recognize the work of everyone involved in this. It has been a long time coming, and it involves the work of this council and councils that came before us. And I truly believe the saying that "we stand on the shoulders of those who come before us," and in this instance, I think the work that we have all done really needs to be commended. I'm very interested in hearing the community's response to the priorities that we have set, and I just, my question to the community, when they speak to us and tell us, I want to know, have we got this right? Is this how you want to see us move forward? Are these the priorities that you can support? So, that will be, that will be a good discussion we'll have with the community, so the work isn't finished. The next step is the consultation, and I look forward to that as much as I looked forward to getting this work done to the point where it is today.
Thank you. I also want to echo Counselor Bestwick's thoughts with respect to the fact this is just the start. Many of these projects have more questions unanswered than answered, and there's a lot of due diligence that will have to be done over the course of time in order to, in order to have the buy-in from the community that these are the projects that they want to see move forward. There were just under 50 specific projects that have been identified over the last five years that the community would like to see the city take on, so there's a lot of work yet to be done, and a lot of discovery yet to be done. Counselor Yocum?
Thank you. I'd totally like to echo the majority of the speakers and state that, are you pleased we got, we'll get some work done? We've got a lot of work done lately, considering when I first started this term, dealing with a lot of nonsense, so when we put the nonsense aside or the chaos some created, we can get some real hard work done. And we've got a lot of hard work done. I'd like to, Ms. Hamra, wish you were here from the beginning of my term. We've got a lot of stuff done in your short tenure, so I'd like to thank you for that. And of course, that list isn't going to please everybody, but it's a good start, and there's going to be people who like pieces of it or this or that, but nonetheless, we're going to make the city better in Nanaimo, and I look forward to enhancing and being supportive, and good work by everyone, and it's a good vision. I'm really pleased we got down to some governance and strategic planning and implementing this now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no further speakers. By consent of council, I've heard nobody wanting to separate the two items. Counselor Brennan?
I don't want to separate the two items. I'm happy to see them go ahead, but I would like to ask staff a question that I've been asked. Is the consultation that we're going to have with the community, the town hall, are we expecting to have more than one, or is it just one kick at the can?
I actually sent council an email today with some of the options, seeking your feedback on how many engagement sessions that you want. The thing that I draw your attention to is that the, no, I'm seeking your feedback, so looking at a couple of town, e-town halls over the summer.
So...
Supplemental?
Well, in that instance, perhaps I will ask for the, for the recommendation to be done in Seri Adam, so that if we did want to add to the, to the piece on the town halls, we could do that. So, could we have it in Seri Adam?
No issue with separating them now?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll vote on number one first, which is to receive the new draft strategic plan titled Strategic Plan Update 2016 to 2019, included as attachment A. So, that's been moved and seconded. So, any discussion on that one? I see none. Call the question halls in favor. Opposed, motion carries. The next item, to direct staff to arrange a council town hall event to allow the opportunity for the public to review and provide comment on the draft strategic plan update document prior to its finalization and formal adoption. You're wishing an amendment to that, Counselor?
Yes, I would. What I think I would like to see is a town hall shortly, while it's still fresh in the community's mind, and then again in early September, so that people will be back from their vacations and they'll be in a better position, I think, to come to us with comments. But if we have it in the high season, then we aren't likely to as reach as many people as we want to hear from. So, that would be the amendment, that direct staff to arrange two town hall events to allow the opportunity for the public to review and provide comment on the draft strategic plan update document prior to its finalization and formal adoption, and I expect that staff would take into account the request to have one at the end of the season or at the beginning of September.
Ms. Hamra?
Thank you, your worship. I think I'll take this opportunity to relay some information that we've brought forward to council and the community throughout this process. One of the reasons council elected to move forward with an update to the strategic plan is that they wanted to be able to rely on the community engagement and the community consultation that took place in the original strategic plan, and given the shorter timeframe, it was thought an update to that is, would be an appropriate process at this juncture. In addition, all of the projects that council considered during the various workshops and day-long sessions were taken from existing community plans, existing reports, existing master plans, in which I'm advised by various staff members, Del Lindsay, Jeff Goodall, Richard Harding, Suzanne Zamborsky, that significant consultation engagement took place in the development of all the plans that we have, our community plan, our OCP, our master plan, so that was the reason those particular projects were brought forward to council. I think another point that I want to make is that these are simply being moved forward in their year of action, so they're existing over the long run, and what council has done in selecting some of the strategic projects and some of the strategies is to put resources sooner rather than later towards different projects. At the same time, we have comprehensive operational plans and business plans in each of the departments, so there's work on tons of projects that, once this is adopted by council, staff can come back with the annual operation plan to demonstrate all the great things that staff are doing already in their departments to carry out activities to support these strategic priorities, these values, and your strategic projects. So, there's a lot of public engagement underlying as a solid foundation for this work. That doesn't mean that community consultation doesn't have to occur, because staff's recommending it. It is absolutely necessary as we move forward, but I really want to recognize the volume of engagement that has already taken place through the strategic planning process, through the master plan and community and neighborhood plan processes.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor as it stands right now. Counselor Bestwick, you wish to speak to the proposed amendment?
I pressed my button to speak on the amendment that's been presented to us, yes. Based on the, based on the fact that we do have a motion on the floor, and I acknowledge having more than one open house, per se, but that said, I think we could always have another open house if we felt that the feedback or wasn't, for some reason, acceptable or didn't reach as many targets or whatever the case might be. I'm comfortable with the motion the way that it is. I won't be supporting, and it's not because about engaging fewer people. To me, this is about being expeditious with what it is that we have identified in all of our own spheres of discussions and communications and talks with people in our community from our own worlds that we travel in. And we didn't arrive at the five and then seven items without considerable discussion and open houses, if you will, or town hall meetings with people in our community and with the volumes and volumes and volumes of master plans and strategic plans that we have in our possessions. This is a roadmap that gives us some direction. I hope we fill up an auditorium. I hope we fill this, I don't know where the town hall will be, but when we have it, I certainly, so that we can advance, so that we can move toward a goal and an objective. Somewhat swifter or quicker, we've had lots of time to get here, and there's going to be lots of work to get where we're going. We will be entertaining our 2017 to 2021 financial plan right behind these town halls or these, whatever we're going to, and how many of them we're going to have. It's going to fall out so quickly in terms of the amount of volume of work that needs to be done. So, I'm so comfortable with moving forward with staff's recommendations, and if we come back and learn that we didn't have enough feedback, then, okay, we can go out and do it again. But if we say there's going to be two of them or three of them, and they're spread out, and they're, and, well, if I miss the first one, it's not a big deal. I'll go to the second one. Well, maybe, gee whiz, they should have done the third one, because they didn't get to the first two. Well, we've been doing this for years, actually, and the time is now. Several of us here, and this is an FP COW, so it's supposed to be a little bit more informal, and we can actually sit around and talk and roll up our sleeves, so that's kind of why I'm doing this right now, but we all were at a breakfast, not, many of us were at a breakfast not that long ago, and the message was really loud and clear from a speaker that got a standing ovation that is well-respected, and it was, "Do it right. Do it once, and do it fast." We've been procrastinating on a whole lot of stuff for quite some time, and if we get one of these things right out of the seven, if we do this first one right, to gain your confidence, to gain your trust, that, because I don't want not to have your confidence on number two to seven, we better do this right, and we better do it well the first time, so that we have your confidence and trust that we don't have to have three town halls and four open houses and six more reports in five more years and go, "What the hell are they doing down there?" are they doing down there? Why don't they do something? What have they done? When are they gonna do it? That's what you've elected us to do. That's what we need to do, and we need to do this one right, whatever this one is, and let's get it right, and let's get your confidence, so we can start moving this city in a real positive direction." I think we're ready for that. I really do. I believe we're ready for that. We're on the precipice of something really, really exciting in the city of Nanaimo, and this document's gonna take us there. This document's gonna lead us there. So we're all gonna be challenged, challenging you to trust us, challenging you to say, "Get going," challenging you to say, "Let's get it done. Let's go. Let's get it done. Come on, let's go. We can do this. Come on, we can do it." That's it. Thank you for letting me rant, sorry.
Thank you. I need to remind council that the proposed amendment has not received a seconder. Is there anyone who wishes to second the amendment? Seeing none. Next speaker, councillor Fuller, to the main motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna support the motion, the main motion, that we do a coun- council town hall. If four, 500 people show up and everybody wants to speak, well, then that will say something to us, and we might and ultimately would end up having to do another one. So the first one will tell us what we need to do from there. I do hope there's sufficient time given to this, not two hours. You know, our E-Town Halls, I think, are two hours. I think those should be at least four hours for E-Town Halls. It could be a long day, but the public expects city councillors to spend long days. Well, if the public wants input on this, I want them to spend long days as well, too. So, and I want them to come out. I want to see lots of people, and I want everybody to be heard.
Thank you, councillor Pratt.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was on there.
Councillor Hong.
Um, thank you. I support the staff recommendation. Um, I think if we need more, the staff can tell us that we need more. Um, if you're on holidays, they can always send it to us by email if we're gonna do some sort of E-Town Hall, there's always a way. I'm sure we're gonna be streaming it live as well, so there are options and there are methods, and let's just do one, and if we need more, then we'll do more. Let's go from there. Let's get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Uh, your worship, just a procedural item. Since you decided to consider both Sari Adam, we do need a move-in seconder for the second.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So have you got that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next one is councillor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I am happy with the recommendation as it's worded in number two, and I want to see this move forward quickly. I am quite happy to have a town hall event, but I don't think we need to delay to have another one further down the road. So let's, let's just get this going and, and see what the response is and, and move things ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brennan.
Thank you, your worship. I won't support having just one. We get paid to put in long days. The public doesn't. They expect us to accommodate them, and I would like to do that. I think that there are things on the list that some, um, some residents, some citizens have not put a lot of thought into, and would like more information, and would like us to consider their thoughts. I think the idea that we've had lots of conversations with circles that, that we run in, um, doesn't recognize that all of the conversations we have about moving the business of the city ahead have to be available to all the city, to everyone. It can't just be conversations we have in smaller groups. It just can't be. That's, that's not the democratic process. The democratic process says that any meetings we have and discussions we have that move the, um, business of council along need to be available to everyone. I think that having one extraordinarily long meeting, if it, if it even came to that, would be engagement by exhaustion, and I don't, I don't think that's, uh, that's the way we should do our business. I think good community development principles say that you consult the community, you formulate your plan, you take it back to the community, you take their, um, you take what they have to say back, and you take it back to the community for one last time and say, "Have we got it right?" And we haven't done that. We haven't taken this, this particular plan to the community yet, and now we're planning just one. We have yet to have a community consultation on the core review, on the results of the core review. We have a lot of business backed up that we haven't taken to our community, and I think that we need to look the community square in the eye and say, "This is what our plan is. What do you think?" And that we should do that more than once, particularly when we have several plans. And I appreciate the plans, happy that they're coming forward. I just strongly believe that the community has to have an opportunity more than once to say what they think about something as large as this. This is a tremendous amount of money that we are proposing to spend. Um, I see that not everyone agrees with me, but I think that there are, there are questions to be asked, and I'd like the community to have the opportunity to ask them and get the information and tell us that we got it right. So I, I won't support this, although I do support arranging, um, a town hall. I think that arranging one town hall is not the, the way to go.
Thank you. Ms. Semer.
Thank you, your worship. Staff hasn't actually given you all the recommendations on engagement, so certainly we'll look at more engagement options for the strategic plan. It's the number one recommendation from the core services review is to set the vision. So when staff take a look at what the strategic plan update is, it's really an affirmation of your vision, your values, your strategic priority areas. The next step is for staff, once this is approved, to take it away and tell you what your options are with that, and put dollar figures to the different items. At this point, that's premature. We're waiting for council to land on and set its strategic direction, and if these are the priorities that you want to achieve, poverty reduction strategies, all those things can be put forward by staff in the various departments, we'll quantify what that means, and you'll have another round of decision-making on what type of dollar values you want to attribute to it. But this is sort of the core pivotal, um, starting point. We need your vision. As respect to the core services review, report will be coming forward at the next council meeting, which I think is the 11th, and that'll be a strategy for rolling that out, and it will have a whole lot of recommendations for community engagement and timelines over the next three, six, nine, 18 months.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp.
Uh, thank you very much. I couldn't agree more with councillor Brennan on the consultation and then formulate and then take it back to the public. And what was missing was get it done. And from my perspective, we did the strategic plan a few years ago, and we spent money on it, and we did the consultation, and we did formulate it, and we did take it back a number of times, but it wasn't acted on. And that's the difference. It didn't get acted on as deeply as it should have. It didn't get down into every department and valued economy, environment, and equity and culture. It wasn't valued in there. So we now are pushing that forward, and this is the take-back again. We're taking it back out there again. We're putting the same stuff back on the table to say, "This council has grabbed on to this, and we want this." And I believe the staff will deliver it. Within the core review, they've already delivered things that have improved financial accounting and that, so staff, the staff is working on that. So for me, I love the fact now that we had our economy, environment, and, and social equity, and our culture, and now we've added activity. Uh, a lot of people talk about the culture in Nanaimo, and a lot of it's to do with active sports and active things. So I believe we have gone out for a number of years to the community. Now we're gonna deliver it. There's a difference here for me, and this is a take-back. We're gonna have another town hall on our strategic plan, a lot of it's similar. We've adopted a lot of the same things out of the old plan, and we're moving forward, and we're gonna get it right, and that's the important one to me. So I appreciate the fact that councillor Brennan wants to see more people and more input. I know there's times when we've had thousands of people in front of us here signing petitions, and we didn't act on it, like, I won't mention, but, so this is it. This is getting it done. This is get at it, for me. So I appreciate the motion on the floor, and if we require more input, we'll hear very loudly from our, our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Yocum.
Thank you. I just want to say, um, I support the motion as it is from the staff, and I didn't hear anywhere saying this is our only form of communication. Councillor Hong hit it right on the nail when he said there's other forms. This will be online. Staff will, I'm sure there'll be mailouts even. I'm sure the staff will be older, great communication, and like Jerry said, there'll be, we, we get flooded emails on everything, and this will be no different, and rightfully so. So, so I don't, I get a little bit, my, um, what's that term? Hair, I don't know if I have hair on my back, but hair on my back, um, up when I hear, we don't, we don't have, there has to be a democratic process. We're a very open, transparent, democratic process happening, so I find that somewhat insulting when someone suggests, sort of hinting that it's not a process, isn't happening, because there is, and I look forward to hearing from every, each and every one of you. And, um, this would not be happening. Like I said when I first started this term, didn't know what, anyways, we all know how the first year in a bit went in this city. Everyone in this room knows. So I'm really proud and stoked that we're actually gonna be working and doing stuff, and it's not everyone in this city is gonna like one, two, to seven, but nevertheless, it's a vision, and we're gonna start piecing away at it and make this city even better. So I'm glad we're gonna roll up our sleeves, and actually, the hardest part of anything is implementation. Jim, you're right, not, not many things get implemented, so now we're gonna implement it, and I'm pleased. So, um, if we need more, uh, this town hall stuff, absolutely. Gordon said, if we, we go on, we'll have more. So I'll get off my soapbox, too. Thanks.
Councillor Hong.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point very clear to the residents. Just because we picked these doesn't mean that we're actually gonna do it. If we find out that we're gonna have to spend $100 million on something, we're not just gonna spend $100 million just because it's written down on here. You, you're gonna get consulted. Any of these projects we're gonna do, we're gonna have to come back eventually for consultation with the public and so forth, but this is just for the vision, so we can tell staff, "Hey, can you put some time into this? Like, get us some numbers?" When we have this town hall, is somebody's gonna ask me, "How much is gonna sports and entertainment center gonna cost?" I don't know. It, it's a vision, but if we can tell staff to go and, "Hey, can you, uh, come back and tell us so we can forward it to the people?", that's the stage we're at. We're just at the stage where we're picking these items. We can tell staff to go and have a look. Tell us what this is gonna cost, what our options are. How much can we spend on affordable housing? How much can we spend on property acquisition? But until we get this part through, staff can't do anything. So this is where, it, it's not that we're leaving the public out and we're not being transparent, and we're gonna go and build all this stuff. It, it's vision. It's vision planning, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to read out the, uh, read out the recommendation. It's to direct staff to arrange a council town hall event to allow the opportunity for the public to review and provide comment on the draft strategic plan update document prior to its finalization and formal adoption. So I see no further speakers. Call the question halls in favor. Opposed, show councillor Brennan's opposed. Thank you. Next item, under Community Services, Beben Park Central Facility Development Opportunities. And the purpose is to obtain council direction on four proposals for development of the central area of Beben Park. So we have five speakers tonight, and based on the procedure bylaw, each speaker will be provided five minutes to speak. I'm going to, uh, I'm going to hold questions until the end, till after everyone has spoken, and I would like all of the speakers to reassemble up available to the podium so that they can answer questions as directed to them. So the first speaker is Mr. Chris Beaton. I saw you wincing when I said five minutes.
Yeah, it's, it's not usual. But it's at, oh, no, it was at 10, now it's down to five. Uh, it's good to see you, mayor and councillors. I want to begin by recognizing the traditional territory of the Nanaimo First Nation upon whose land we live, work, learn, and play. The six organizations that are here this evening have asked me to provide a brief overview of the process that has led us to this shared vision for Beben Park. Thirteen months ago, several of our organizations were here with council, speaking in support of the newly developed Beben Park Master Plan. The plan was adopted by mayor and council in May of 2015. I wish I had a dollar for every time I heard someone say, "I hope that document doesn't sit on some shelf collecting dust." I'm pleased to report to mayor and council that the Beben Plan has not been collecting dust. The six community organizations began meeting several months ago. Many had never met prior to this process. Some had been located at Beben for decades. Others were brand-new to the park. I think it is fair to say that we did not start this process in agreement, nor were we certain we could find agreement. The groups met numerous times, usually every second week for a couple of hours at a time. We also communicated regularly and often via group emails in between meetings. The result of our efforts was twofold. One was an image that is included in the staff report that you have. It should be noted that the image is purely conceptual. We simply tried to answer the question, "Can each of the proposed facilities fit within a single footprint at Beben Park?" I'm happy to report our collective answer to that question is yes, but I will also say that the image you see tonight is probably the 20th or so in a long line of images that we shared, dismissed, disagreed on, saw potential in, and then finally agreed to. It was not a quick process. A former councillor, who many of you know, was fond of saying, "It's nice to see pretty pictures, but what does it mean?" On this point, our pretty picture embraces these key principles: avoid duplication with new and existing facilities, complement what exists already at Beben Park, be accessible to the public, and be multipurpose. Bring more traffic to the park, and I mean children, families, adults, I don't mean cars. Include public gathering spaces. Seek efficiencies during development process, which could possibly mean design and construction. We recognize that if council approves moving forward this evening, it will do so with specific conditions. After all, we understand that council is mandated to speak on behalf of the broader community, not just a handful of community organizations. We recognize and commit ourselves to further community consultation. Like all of you, we want to get this right for the city. We don't want someone 10 or 20 years down the road asking, "What were they thinking? Why did they approve this?" We recognize that other community groups have an interest in this development process. We recognize the need to further consult with Nanaimo First Nation. We recognize that we have a responsibility to build upon a long history of volunteers and community members who have already developed Beben Park. I want to thank Richard Harding for his support and guidance during this process. I think we can all agree that Nanaimo's parks are in good hands, in large part due to staff's commitment. On a personal note, I want to thank each of the representatives from each of the groups who have made a commitment to this process. As much as it can be frustrating at times, sometimes territorial, and way too competitive, community development work can also be very rewarding. I think you would all agree that when a process can be respectful and collaborative, ultimately there is likely to be a broader benefit. Mayor and council, these are exciting times. The city paid for a substantive, multi-year process that resulted in the Beben Park Master Plan. That plan was adopted by council last May. That plan identified opportunities to enhance existing facilities while accommodating new development, and it invited community to step forward with ideas and a commitment to do the work necessary. We accept that invitation, and we look forward to working with each of you. Aichka.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Larry Whaley, representing Island Roots Market Cooperative.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I'm wondering if it's necessary to give my name and address, because you already have it on your paper, so I assume since this is a- So I assume since this is a committee of the whole, you can take it from there, and I don't have to state it.
I see the clerk nodding in the affirmative.
Okay. First thing I want to say is what he said. Now I want to deal with the Island Roots portion of this overall development concept for Bevan Park. I'm gonna tell you, to begin with, how this came about, the, how the Island Roots Market Co-op came about, and why we're focused on the one item that's missing from your strategic plan priorities, of course, which is food. Although we can find a way to put it in. A few years back, there was an organization, or a group of people really, called Occupine Ngunnemo. And they were raising hell, I think most of you will remember. When it was beginning to wind down, they had a, what they called a general assembly. Counselor Fuller, then Justice Gordon, was there, as was I, and a number of young people. The discussion that took place was around what those people want to do with their lives. At the end of the round robin, Gordon said he was surprised at how many of them wanted to farm. Well, I hadn't twigged to that, but when he said it, it set bells ringing in my head, and that was to say, okay, you're gonna farm, how can you make a living if there's no way to sell your product? That resulted in several community meetings, a number of people involved there that were prominent in the community, or still are. And the registration of the Island Roots Market Co-op in July of 2012. We accept, we went to Co-op because of the Co-op principles, which are in the handout that I'll give you, and I hope you'll take time at some point to read them. We did an exhaustive search after the formation of the Co-op, looking for a place to set up a market that would work for people, and couldn't find one that we could use the way we wanted to. So we opened a one-day-a-week market at the Pleasant Valley Hall in October of 2014. Today, we have over two hun, over three hundred members. We have, we've been operating at Pleasant Valley Hall for two years, and we have a partnership with the Bowen Road Farmers Market Society that run, used to run the Wednesday market, now run combined in cooperation with us. Two markets, Wednesday and Saturday in the summertime. So we're working cooperatively with them, as we are with the other groups that want to participate in the overall Bevan Plan. Our vision is to provide a building, equipment, staff needed for a year-round indoor market at Bevan Park. And the reasons for that are in our mission statement and our goals and objectives, which again, you'll see in the handout if you want to take the time to read it. The, we, we approached the Parks and Recreation Commission just before you wrapped it up for the, for the evaluation. And that was on November twenty-fifth of 2015. We, the idea of the market at Bevan Park was accepted by Parks and Recreation Commission at that time, and we were ready to proceed with the next step when the commission was dissolved. So we're now, well, isn't that interesting? I was just gonna ask if there was a copy of that around. The proposed location of the Island Roots Market Co-op would be an eight thousand square foot building located on the, on the left-hand side of the picture you've got there on the screen and in front of you. It, it will be a complement to the other organizations and the other plans that are being put forward this evening. I think we can work well with those groups, and each of us brings our own interests and our own communities, and I think that will create a far more substantial community. There are three things that we would like you to do. First of all, approve council's recommendation, or staff's recommendation, number one. Secondly, it may be included, but it isn't evident to me, so a motion to approve the Bevan Park Central Facilities Development Proposal in principle. And third, a motion asking staff to provide an indication of the support that the development will require from the city, and include cost estimates for that support in their next report to council. Thank you, your worship, and members of council.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Ms. Karen Streeter, representing the Vancouver Island Exhibition Association.
As mentioned, I am Karen Streeter. I'm the president of the Vancouver Island Exhibition. And with me today is our office administrator, Melissa, and she's gonna do the clicking, because I can't do two things at once. With us today are other board members. And on behalf of the Vancouver Island Exhibition, I'd like to thank the mayor and councils for allowing us to speak today in support of the proposal to redevelop Bevan Park. The Vancouver Island Exhibition is one of the oldest and longest-running events in the city of Ngunnemo, starting in eighteen ninety-four. And over the past hundred and twenty-two years, the VIX has entertained and educated our community about the importance of agriculture, and how it remains a significant and important part of their day-to-day lives. Sorry. Our goals have never changed. To present an annual agricultural exhibition and related events that encourages awareness and improvement, cultivation and creation of agriculture, livestock, horticulture, floriculture, home arts, and hobbies in our community. To educate the public and to encourage young people, especially 4-H clubs, to understand and appreciate the value and importance of agriculture in their communities and their everyday lives. To provide facilities and promotions for the entertainment and amusement of citizens of all ages. To help the entire community grow by including community groups, industrial, commercial, mechanical, and householders. Since incorporation in nineteen fifty-three, the Vancouver Island Exhibition has been the longest tenant and an integral part of Bevan Park, from the early days of being called Exhibition Park. Over the many decades, the VIX has seen a significant amount of changes, and is proud to have remained a key component of the park. As we look towards the future, the Vancouver Island Exhibition hopes to continue to be a part of the new design of Bevan Park. In two thousand and six, we made the first of several presentations to city council and Parks and Recreation Commission, and hopes to obtain approval to demolish most of our aging barns, and in place, build a new agricultural center and animal barns, which will operate year-round. Our facilities are old and limited in what we can do with them, and most recently, in the past few years, an easy target for vandalism and theft. In two thousand and eleven, the VIX, in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department, took continued steps towards the redevelopment of the park by presenting a study generated by Harold Engineering, outlining three possible alternatives, and at the city's subsequent request, eagerly participated and supported updating the Bevan Park Master Plan. We were extremely happy at the decision to continue with an agriculture component to the park. During these years, the VIX has continued to work behind the scenes to identify and meet with other potential groups and users of the park. The Ngunnemo Kennel Club has expressed an interest in being the anchor tenant in our new building. Most recently, over the past several months, as Chris pointed out, the Vancouver Island Exhibition has been working with the Ngunnemo Equestrian Association, the IPPC, and Island Roots Farmers Market Group, who have all expressed a desire to build new and complementary facilities at Bevan Park. We are extremely excited about the proposed footprint for the Vancouver Island Exhibition. Although smaller an area than we've had in the past, we believe the new look achieves three very important components for the future of the park. One, it supports our goal to build a new agricultural center and animal barns that revitalizes our facilities and provides us new and expanded opportunities to continue our mission to keep agriculture alive in the community. Two, it achieves the city's goals to better utilize the grounds of Bevan Park on a day-to-day basis by introducing new partners and neighbors to the park. And three, it introduces new opportunities for our community by providing related and expanded activities in the most central park of the city. The Vancouver Island Exhibition is one hundred percent in support of this proposal. While we understand that we are still currently in the early stages of the park's redevelopment, we feel that the proposed concept presented today will be great for the future of the VIX and our community. Layouts, designs, services, roadways, and community resources will still need to be determined, but we are confident that we can work with the city and our new neighbors and other potential users. But before we can get there, we, as the Vancouver Island Exhibition, request that the city council approve this project in principle and enter into a long-term lease with the VIX, so that we can continue planning for the future and to determine the needs of other users, to design our facilities, and to take the first steps of securing long-term funding. On behalf of the members of the Vancouver Island Exhibition, I'd like to thank you again for allowing us to present to you today.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ms. Anita Valli, from the Boys and Girls Club of Centre Vancouver Island.
I'm Anita Valli. I'm the president of the Boys and Girls Club of Centre Vancouver Island. And with me speaking in our five minutes is Sally, an elder from Kwakwakwak, and Joy Brennan from the Mid-Island Métis Nation. And certainly, we are in support of the Indigenous Peoples' Place of Culture, which is part of the plan at the new center up there. And it will be a place that is available to all citizens of Ngunnemo and tourists who come to visit us. Right now, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Centre Vancouver Island have seventy-two licensed spaces at the center. We're based out of Bevan House, and certainly, our children can make use of all the services up there at the place. We also are partnering for a youth center that we will have up there. We have a number of youth programs going on in the community, and that will be one of the spots we will offer youth and children services as well. And of course, we'll be working with the Community Kitchens. So we want to build on the existing programs that we now have at Bevan and in the city and other places. So that's the role of the Boys and Girls Club up at the center, and I'd like Joy to speak for the Mid-Island Métis.
Good evening. I'm not sure I wasn't on the agenda, so it's Joy Bremner, two thirty-five St. George Street. And I'm president of the Mid-Island Métis Nation, and I'll just give you a really short idea of, the Métis have been in Ngunnemo since eighteen fifty-two. And some of their descendants still live around the island in different communities. In Ngunnemo itself, the Métis decided to get organized in nineteen ninety-six. Their original meeting started in an elder's home, and has slowly but surely grown since then. The last four years, we've been incredibly busy, you know, creating much more of a public presence and an awareness that the Métis are here. The last census identified two thousand Métis in Ngunnemo, and within our organization, there's actually over twelve hundred that are actually registered with us. This has been a really exciting, and as we have no government funding, and we're not from reserve, we were actually probably one of Canada's first homeless populations when our lands were all taken from us in the eighteen hundreds. And so, we've always worked with other groups and organizations. And coming together on this one has been really exciting, and I have to say, inspiring, in terms of the different groups in Ngunnemo, and the intent and the directions that they're wanting to head. I think are very fitting that this council is able to have all of these groups functioning in the city at this time. And for us to have an actual place to call, in a sense, a home where we can go and do our celebrations would be incredible. A number of you were at National Aboriginal Day. The parks in, in this city are fantastic. That was an incredible event. We have estimates of anywhere from twenty-five hundred to five thousand people attended during that four hours. And that was all of the different First Nations groups and the Métis community. And the reality of the volunteer hours that are put into all of these events constantly is spectacular. And I believe firmly that if given any direction from council at all for this to go forward, that the whole city of Ngunnemo is gonna be very pleased with what occurs on this site.
Thank you for allowing us to speak, and thank you for this Ngunnemo people for allowing us to be here in their territory. The IPPC project is a very powerful movement for all our people, all our Aboriginal people, all the nations that live in urban cities. To build relationships with each and every one of our neighbors, to be able to collaborate in moving forward, in healing, and celebrating, and implementing the truth in reconciliation, to be able to build partnerships with the education, mental health, to, to prevent suicide, to be able to uplift each of our spirits, to be able to walk side by side in a collaborative way that we nurture each other's spirits, your families, our families. Many of our nations have not been able to return to their homelands. Many of our nations live in a city. They need a place for healing, celebrating, and uplifting their children, and for many, many generations. The IPPC will be the first to be able to do that in a city, walking together with you all. I thank you again, and I, I look forward to sharing more with you, the powerful project that we are looking at, as individuals, as families, as communities, continuing the path of our ancestors, their beliefs and values. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lesley Coltish, from the Ngunnemo Equestrians Association.
Sally's a tough act to follow. I'm Lesley Coltish. I'm the current president of the Ngunnemo Equestrian Association, also referred to The area that we currently manage includes four horse barns, a large sand ring, two hog fuel rings, the indoor riding arena known as the Agriplex, a clubhouse, washrooms, a manure pit, a sodas pit, outdoor concrete wash stalls, and a large grassy area behind barns three and four. Oh, sorry. That's the, yeah, there we are. If the proposed redevelopment of Bevan Park is accepted, NEA will be downsizing their lease area considerably. This was not a decision made lightly, but over the last several years, it has become apparent to us that the number of organizations willing to host equestrian events has diminished, and that the type of facility and demand for the bigger shows, clinics, and events is not something that Bevan Park currently has to offer. Because of the high cost of hosting an event, organizers prefer to use gated facilities with audience seating, and if you want to have events year-round on the wet west coast, you'd better have a roof over your head. Our current indoor arena, the Agriplex, is not suitable, as we were recently advised that the building was constructed under the farm code, and so the maximum occupancy of this building is thirty-two persons until it can be brought up to current codes. A new covered arena with audience seating is something that NEA can aim for, but we realized that to get bigger in the future, we had to get smaller now. As you can see from the next slide, the proposed area makes way for the IPPC building by eliminating the existing sand ring and one of the horse barns known as Barn One. That sand ring would be relocated to the site of one of the existing hog fuel rings. The end result is that we are left with one large sand ring, a smaller hog fuel ring, and the indoor riding area. A second barn, Barn Two, currently located between the sand ring and the hog fuel ring, is twenty-two stalls on either side, and would also be torn down during development and replaced with a new twenty-five-stall barn facing the hog fuel rings. Having stalls only accessible from one side forms a natural barrier between the equestrian garden- grounds and the IPPC building and eliminates the need for fencing in that area. The remaining two horse barns would be torn down over time, and a new 20-horse stall barn would be built along the outside of the Agroplex. The end result is that our current 116 stalls would be replaced with 45, not enough for even a moderately sized show like the one that is being held on the grounds this weekend that has just over 50 entrants, but a good start. Further stabiling could be accomplished through portable stalls, sharing space in the new VIX barns, or the erection of another 20-stall barn. The clubhouse is a building that we recently refurbished and would be relocated to the front of the hog fuel rings, as this acts as both a show office and an announcer's booth during events. We would lose the washrooms, which quite frankly is no great shame, since they are in deplorable condition and cannot be made wheelchair accessible. Washrooms would be shared with IPPC and VIX. The central location of Bevan Park is both a benefit and a curse for horse owners. Bevan is close to the fairies for those coming from the mainland, and it's central to all other communities on Vancouver Island, which reduces trailering time. The curse, however, is the lack of perimeter fencing around the equestrian grounds. We have never had a serious accident as a result of a loose horse, but we have had loose horses, and we had some very close encounters. NEA sees a perimeter fence around the equestrian portion of Bevan for the safety of all users with pedestrian pass-throughs to encourage foot traffic into and out of the equestrian grounds. The grassy field area currently located behind barns three and four is of particular importance to ourselves, VIX, and the Nanaimo Kennel Club, all of whom use the area. NEA for parking trucks and horse trailers during shows and clinics, VIX for various exhibitions during the fair, and the Nanaimo Kennel Club for outdoor dog agility training. NEA has been working with the Kennel Club for more than 15 years now. They are frequent users of our facility year-round, hosting weekly lessons both indoor and out, quarterly dog trials, and regional and national trials at Bevan. We envision that part of the grassy area would be further improved by the Kennel Club for their outdoor trails, trials. As part of our proposal, NEA envisions a designated area for camper hookups along the fence near the community gardens. This would go far to encourage multi-day events for both the equestrian and dog folk. For participants in dog trials, this is of paramount importance, as their animals cannot be locked in hawk campers, and it takes power to run an air conditioner. Nanaimo is the only facility on Vancouver Island that does not offer hookups to participants at animal events. NEA hopes that you will share our vision of what we would like the equestrian grounds to become. We have been a long-time resident of Bevan Park, helping to shape what the park is today, and we would like to share in what we think it can be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's timed perfectly. I wonder if you can just remain at the podium?
Sure.
And I would invite the other speakers to come up. I first off want to, for questions from council. I first want to compliment every one of you for the work that you've done. Mr Harding advised me just the other day that bringing groups together that are as diverse as yours into a room to work collaboratively on an approach on a single piece of property is a monumental task in itself, and the fact that you've gone into those rooms with open arms and open ears has made a huge difference, and I want to congratulate all of you for that. That's the highest compliment that we can pay, that you've worked together to a common goal. So councillor Yelkum is the first one.
Thank you. First of all, good work, and this, all of your entities are great, and they're awesome, and you're actually all on the same page. Wow. Whoever quarterbacked there, whoever chaired the meetings, good work. Question I would have in regard to the cultural space, and I don't know the, I'm under, I've heard we have about, in our beautiful city, we're very blessed to have eight to 10,000 Indigenous groups from elsewhere, besides being in Nanaimo myself, but we're only 2,000 in the city, and I heard there's like 10,000 Indigenous folks from elsewhere. Is that ballpark number right, about, sort of?
Regional district, about 10,000, yes.
Okay, so definitely see the need of ceremony space, ceremonial space, and not being, claiming an expert at all on other groups, but the question I'd have on the ceremony space, is there space to re, if this gets approved and everything, say the ball's got rolling here, what about like a private space, a field or some, a field or smaller space, because a lot of people like sweats? And I was thinking, when I was looking at this, oh, where would they have a, and I know you want to sort of private around that, so I was just thinking, well, that type of comments on that, because I know it's common, I know they have a sweat up on 10th Street, behind their, behind 10th Street at Telekom Laylam, but, I'm rambling, but you know what I mean, Chris?
I do councillor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the challenge with facilities like this is trying to be everything for everyone, and there are limitations. We would, if council would approve it and Richard were supportive, we'd love to put a sweat on, at Bevan Park. I think it would be a wonderful addition to the IPPC. You know, but we are trying to create an indoor space to be able to accommodate culture and those practices that right now are happening in church basements, in school gymnasiums, open fields, wherever they might, wherever we can find space, rent space, borrow space. And I've got to say, none of those spaces are culturally appropriate or culturally responsive, but just to answer your question very clearly, it would be wonderful to have a sweat. We have an Inuit elder who sits on our elders council that's leading this project as well, and he talks about having an oogee, which is a very large igloo, at Bevan Park. Now, I'm not sure the climate would accommodate that, but these are the needs of our community, because we are such a diverse Indigenous community. I'm Mohawk, Métis, Kwakwakawak, Salish, I mean, everybody is here. This is a good start, and maybe that's next. Thank you.
Councillor Hong.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, everybody. Just to let the public know, you're not asking the city to build you these facilities, am I correct? Great, thank you.
Yeah, I want you to build it. No. Each of us has agreed that we will do our own fundraising and develop the property, manage it in cooperation with the city and the community that surrounds the park and people who want to come and join us. But we'll do the fundraising. That's one of the reasons that we need approval in principle this evening, so that we can get on with it, because the rules require that to happen before we can actually start our fundraising. So there was some talk earlier about, let's do it? Well, now let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bestwick.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you for your work and your hard work. This aligns rather well with the previous conversation that just took place, and I just have to compliment you folks for getting together. I was a little bit intimate with Bevan Park for about 15 years, so I'm quite familiar with its history and how it's arrived where it is, and all of the good work that's been done on Bevan Park by volunteers just like yourselves, to Mr Bus McDonald, who built the Agroplex, to the Northfield Softhole Association that literally built the four fields, to the Kinsmen Participate Park that was done by the Kinsmen, to the Altrusa Park that was volunteered, and every piece of equipment there donated, and so on, and so on, and so forth. So this community, when they get together, when our community, when we get together and want to do something, we're real generous, and we're real hardworking, and it's time for us. And Bevan Park Recreation Centre, we owe it nothing. It's given to us so much, it's been so, when I saw that sign, Exhibition Park 1956, can we please reproduce that? Can we replicate that? Because what we have in front of us right now is we, again, this is opportunity. The time is right. It's so wonderful to see you standing here together, saying to us, we need to do this, and we need to do this sooner rather than later, and we need to get on with it, and we need to help in whichever way possible. I just, let's just do it right, and I'm not, let's just do it right. If it should be another 100 square feet bigger and one more storey higher, and then let's think about that, let's talk about that. Let's make sure that we get this so that we can all benefit for decades to come, and we don't have to be, somebody else doesn't have to be back here and go, you know what? Why didn't we put 500 more seats in there? Or whatever the case is. So I'm so excited about this, I'm so excited about this. This forms part of our strategic plan, because this identifies the city of Nanaimo with pride. Buildings are buildings, money's money, whatever, and I don't mean that to be flippant, but this is about pride, and this is about us coming together to doing something that's good for our city, in the middle of the city, at Bevan Park, that when it was built in 1975, was way out of town. And now it's time for us to redevelop, and I'm so happy to see you folks here, and we need to help you. We need to help you. I look forward to hearing more from you guys, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Pratt.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. You all did very well on your presentations, considering we gave you five minutes each, so thank you for that. The first time I saw the Bevan Park Master Plan was by sitting on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I saw this wonderful plan that had square blocks all over it, and what I was told was, this is just an idea. We don't know what's going to end up there. We're hoping that the community will come forward with ideas, and groups will come forward with ideas. I certainly never expected this many to come together and put a plan together, as you have, and this is a really beautiful, very impressive plan, and you've worked very hard to make that happen. I alluded to our staff herding cats before, and I'm sure, I'm sure you felt that way to some degree in your working together, and what I've heard is, you have come together and really looked at, what can we do that would be shared versus everybody replicating the same thing? I understand Community Kitchen was one of those ideas. To the equestrian group, downsizing their expectations is commendable, because I know you really do want to stay where you are, and I, you know, I think that's what it takes sometimes, it's a give and take, and I think when you give and take, people are more generous with sharing, and I see you as a group that very much has the potential to do that within this beautiful plan. I'm very impressed with it. I'm very impressed with you as a group, that you actually came together and came up with this, because I, you know, for it all to be there together is, it really gives us something to think about, rather than, gee, I wonder who's going to be coming in, maybe we could have this here, and if they did, then where would we put that? And that's a little more haphazard. To come with a plan that is comprehensive is really commendable. So I am excited about this, just as councillor Bestwick is. I really do see that if we are able to accept this plan in principle, that, and I know that you need that in order to go out and do fundraising, I'm very familiar with that aspect of things from my previous life, and I know how important it is to get the approval in order for you to start the hard work of fundraising, and it is going to be hard work, and especially when you're all going out at once with your, all your different, all your different ideas. So I had a question, and I've completely forgotten about it in my rambling, but I just want to say, good work, and I am so proud of you all, I really am.
You were going to make a motion.
I was. Oh, was I? Yes.
Can I just say councillor, that Larry's correct, these are separate projects.
Yes.
But they absolutely see the opportunity to work together, as we've done so far, so it may extend right into fundraising as well. We just have not explored that, and there's a lot of variables at play, but we're not ruling out the idea of doing a joint fundraising of some kind, so.
Yeah. Thank you all. Thank you for coming and presenting, and thank you for this wonderful idea. I love it, myself. I absolutely love it. Thank you.
Councillor Fuller.
You guys are good. You picked the night that we did the strategic plan, and you knew that one of our priorities is a Bevan Park Master Plan. Good on you. Good timing. Yeah, looks, it looks really good. It meets all of the community values, and it especially meets the active lifestyle value. You know, a lot of people don't realise that participation in your own culture allows you to be active in lifestyle, and that will be phenomenal if you guys can raise money for it. That's cool, because the city will put in the infrastructure, that's what we do, and hopefully fundraising goes well. Well, it's on, it's on the master plan, yeah, so we will be discussing that once we get going. Now, that being said, when we have our community meeting, if they don't like the Bevan Park Master Plan, yeah, watch it. Thank you all.
Councillor Brennan.
Thank you. Listen, congratulations to you guys on an excellent process. It has been difficult, I'm not going to belabour it, I mean, it must have been difficult, is what I mean to say. So good on you for pulling together all of the aspects of this when all of the projects appear to be so diverse. I know it can't have been easy, but you have produced a marvelous plan for us, so for that, I thank you very much. And just in terms of community development, going out and doing the work, and pooling your ideas, you've come before us tonight, and the question for me is, did you get it right? And the answer is, yeah, you did, you got it right, so thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Councillor Thorp.
Thank you, Chair. Most of what I would like to say has already been said, and I don't want to belabour it, but I did have one little quibble with something Mr Whaley said, and I'm sure he'll correct me if I'm mistaken. He said in our visioning that we had forgotten about food. Did I hear that? Thank you. All right. And I have to disagree, because I don't think we have forgotten about the value of locally grown food and its importance to our community, and I think that's reflected in statements like community wellness and healthy lifestyle, and I know councillor Hong made reference to that specifically when we had one of our retreat workshops. So I think what you're talking about here tonight has not been forgotten about, and that's reflected in where we're at, and hopefully about to support your project. Of course, I want to congratulate the groups on working together. I also want to acknowledge the work of Mr Harding and the Parks and Recreation staff, because this began with the Bevan Park Master Plan, and that started a long time ago, and that was a long process to get that master plan developed and finalised, recognising that it was time to redevelop Bevan Park. And once that master plan was completed, it identified potential appropriate uses for that large central area of the park, and the hope was that groups like yourselves would come forward with proposals that fit with that master plan, and you did. And then the next step, as we've heard tonight, was getting you to work together and collaborate and come up with a vision that everybody could live with, and how satisfying is that, that you've been able to do that, again, with the help of city staff? So thank you for your work in this, and I'm very, very excited about moving this project forward in a real central meeting place in what is now the heart of our city. Didn't used to be, but it is now. So to me, this is not a win-win situation. This is a win for the VIX, it's a win for the IPPC, for the Aboriginal Association, for the Métis group, it's a win for the Island Roots Market, it's a win for the equestrian group, it's a win for the Boys and Girls Club, it's a win, 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 win. And it's another big win, and it's a win for the city of Nanaimo and our citizens. So again, my thanks and congratulations, and I'll be very pleased to support the staff recommendations on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp.
I was just wanting to say that I'm sorry for the two of you that drew the short straw and had to lobby me. Sorry about that, Larry, and she laughed about having.
I thought they had the short straw.
That's why I say they got the short straw, they had to. I really appreciate, and the information you brought forward to us when I did talk to you was excellent, and you've been doing a good job, I appreciate it, and I'd like to receive the delegation and make the motions if we can, if everybody else has finished now, but I really appreciate what you're doing for our community.
Could I just respond to councillor Thorp and to say that I didn't see the word food in your priorities? I'm glad to hear that it is there. I hope that there is a food champion on council. I understand that councillor Padgy did that in his term. I understand that Counsel Padgy did that in his term, but I hadn't noticed it from this council. So, I hope that it would be you, or you, or one of you will grab on to that and say "food" at every opportunity. And the final thing I want to say, Your Worship, is a thank you to Mr. Harding for his assistance and the work that he put into this. And, and his sort of firm hand, where he told me, "Bugger off and talk to the others", basically. It was, it was a great help, and I appreciate it. And I also want to come back to, I think it was Counsel Fuller, who said...
You had five minutes, sir.
I did have five minutes. Start this thing again. I just want to say to Counsel Fuller that the choice of the evening was Mr. Harding's, not ours.
Thank you.
I hadn't finished yet. Ten years ago, put water, food, shelter, and special needs on the table with emergency management. Water, food, and shelter. That's the most important things. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Kip, could I get you to...
Move or receive the delegations?
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Before you go to moving the recommendation, I just want counsel, rather than go around around circles here, there was mention tonight about approving in principle the plan. So, if we're going to move the recommendation, I would hope that there would be no further amendments to it, or that it be presented that way to start off with. But the staff's recommendation does not suggest, suggest at this point, supporting the plan in principle. Other, just receive, direct, and direct.
That's good for now, because we're going to have more information.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I move all three.
Move all three?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Bestwick. And discussion. You wish to speak to it?
No.
Great, thank you. Mr. Harding.
I'm good. I thought you had a question about approval in principle, if you didn't.
Thank you. Counsel Holland.
Thank you. I actually have some concerns. I just want to point out a few things, that I kind of actually want to amend these. But I fully support the groups and the concept. But I just wanted to bring it back to that this is one of the priorities on our strategic plan, which we haven't approved. Hasn't been approved, like Counsel Fuller mentioned. Timing of this couldn't be any worse. I'm sorry. We need public consultation, and that's why I said, let's get it done. Had we listened to Counsel Brennan and done two or three, sold this through September, gone back, then decided, then we would have had you folks be months and months behind, because we dragged our feet. I fully support this. I want to get this done. And this is where I'm saying that we need public consultation. I can't support in principle right now, because we can't, we haven't accepted our strategic plan. The public hasn't accepted our plan. And this could fall off. If we had enough people that do not want to see this, I'm not going to waste staff time on a project that the people don't want to see. Not that they will. I'm just saying, to play devil's advocate, that we have to do one thing at a time first. The strat plan update needs to be approved, needs to be adopted. Then we can receive this delegation. I have no problem supporting it. I have no problem supporting this in principle. It's great. But there are processes and procedures that we have to follow. So, that's playing devil's advocate. So, number two, where it says, proposed developments this summer, whether we scrap this summer out, or after the adoption of a strat plan update. And a number three, I'd like to strike within the next three months, because we can't put a timeframe to this, when we can't commit to it on a strat plan. So, it worries me that we're doing this, that when we talk about public process and public engagement, we're not doing it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you. I do support the idea. I do support this going forward. But until we have our strat plan, I can't see us committing a time to this. And I would like to see this go forward sooner than later, if we can make that happen. Thank you.
Well, the phone lines have lit, not written, have lit up, these gentlemen. I just wanted to mention, Counselor, that, that item two does not talk about starting any projects. It talks about engaging in public open houses. And then item three does suggest that we go back, that staff to report back with feedback from the public, before we make any next steps.
Yeah, I'm just saying that this summer might be premature, if we're doing a strat plan update this summer, unless we're going to do it next week. I just saying we should just scrap that word, "this summer". I can support it, because it's just the timing, because it's wrong, until we approve the strat plan. I don't want the people to think that we're jumping the gun again, and we're not getting public engagement, is my concern. Because that was mentioned already, that we weren't getting public engagement. So, I would like to do this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bestwick.
Well, with all due respect, and with all being pragmatic, being all things to all people, all the time, if we don't put a time limit on this, we'll be sitting back here in a year from now, saying, where, how's that going? Where's that report at? Oh, right. Oh, yeah. Shoot, we've moved off that now, when we've moved over here. This became more important, or whatever. One of the things that we're really, really good at is procrastination. We are really good at that. And now, behind the scenes, the heavy lifting, the compliments that have been flowing, the work that's gone on to get here, and now the suggestion is that we should just wait a little bit longer? Because we're not being asked for money. We're not being right yet. So, and, and maybe we should be. And maybe we should be. But if we don't say, you've got 12 weeks to get your business plan, get your thing going, get it back to us, yeah, I know how hard you've worked. I get it. And maybe this jump secue, maybe this health and wellness and recreation and passive activity and food share, and all of those things move their way through the system a little bit quicker, because of the work that somebody else is doing, not us. We're not doing it. We're not tasking staff to do this work. We're asking them to go out there and do public consultation, and sure, we'll be there, and we'll have some storyboards and, you know, all the stuff that we do. Beben Park's 50 years old, tired, needs a facelift, needs an upgrade, needs an investment. It's not an expense. A gathering place in the center of town that draws people together for all various forms of activities and recreation, passive and otherwise? Beautiful. Let's do it. Let's do it. And let's do it quick, so we can get on to the next thing. Because we got too many things. I heard somebody say, I hope this doesn't sit on a shelf. Well, there's only one way for this not to sit on a shelf. And that's for us to task people with timelines, to go out and do things, and get back to us, so we can make decisions and get going. Because that whole place has been built on the sweat and the labor, and on the backs of volunteers in this community, all of Beben Park. All of it. Donated property for the greater good of this community. All of it. So, let's get on with it. Let's give it back to the community again. Let's build it, and let's make it current and relevant, and something we can be proud of. Let's be proud to move this project forward. This is, and this isn't the only one. This is just one of many, that this city can take a lot of pride in doing. And once we do one, the next one's coming. And then the next one's coming right behind that. We're 100,000 people and growing, and people want to come here. And we don't want to leave here. If I hear it one more time, that I don't want my kids to leave here, because we have to be able to provide them employment here, okay, well, let's start doing stuff. They leave because there's not stuff here. So, let's get stuff that people want in the 21st century. Sorry. Let's just move forward.
Thank you very much. If I can get you to hold your applause, please. Ms. Samra, with all, with respect, I've got five speakers. Can I hold you to the end?
I think you need a point of clarification for our recommendation to council, if that's all right.
A point of clarification?
Yeah, I'll do part of it. You can do the other part.
We've got motions on the floor.
The reason why staff didn't recommend approval in principle tonight is there are still a few moving pieces, and there's a couple steps to take before we get there. We can get there very soon, and we can deal with those timelines. But part of it is having your strategic plan adopted. We haven't, by selecting the Beben Master Plan as one of your priorities, we want to have a session with you to go through it. There's also a commitment of council to the Council of Tsunamik First Nation, to engage with them on community development and land projects within the city of Nanaimo and within their traditional territory. And staff has not had an opportunity to sit down and have that discussion or dialogue with SFN, nor has it happened at the council level, at the bilateral table. In addition, there's some recommendations in the Core Services Report that deals with facility management and leasing, that we want to take a quick look at, to be able to be able to recommend to council, that we're in a position to move forward and lock in these long-term projects. They're not going to be, for a couple of years, these are going to be long-term commitments by the city to the community. So, we want to be able to give you the best advice that we can. And there's a few meetings that have to take place. We can prioritize them and make them happen as soon as possible, so that we can keep moving this forward, and we don't stand in the way of progress. But these are some of the commitments that we've made, and we need to be able to tick these off before you get to approval in principle.
Thank you. So, we have five speakers. Counsel Thorpe, Fuller, Pratt, Yocum, and Brennan. Counsel Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a motion currently on the floor, please?
It's been moved and seconded, as, as recommended.
Okay, thank you. And I wish to speak in favor of the three recommendations. As written, I understand the points that Ms. Samra is making. I think they're valid. But I see no reason to move, or not to move ahead with the three staff recommendations. That's the next step, it seems to me. And we can go ahead with the public open house, get the feedback and so on, but let's get this rolling. So, I'll certainly be voting in favor of the three recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fuller.
I want to echo Counsel Hong on one thing. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Counsel Pratt.
Thank you. I, I agree completely with Counsel Bestwick's impassioned speech. Beben Park needs a facelift. There is no doubt about it. These people have given us a solution, and they've worked very hard to get here. I fully support the staff recommendations. I understand there are some key pieces that need to be sorted out. But to me, this needs to get rolling. It needs to move forward. We're done with having excuses of waiting for this or waiting for that. I really believe in this project, and I really want to see it move forward, so I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counsel Brennan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I like these three recommendations. I like the timeframes in them. I like that we have, that, that staff will host the workshops or our public open houses this summer. And I like that we have asked this report to come back to us within three months. I think that setting timeframes like that, timelines like that, is what allows us to consult and get things done. I don't think consultation means that everything dies, you know, a slow and painful death. I think consultation means that we put some timeframes on it, and we work towards those timeframes. We get back and we do it. So, I'm happy to see this. I'm happy to see it as, as outlined with those details, and I'm very happy to support this.
Thank you. Counsel Yocum.
Thank you. Let's be quick. Is, I like the idea of the public house, because it is on the strat plan earlier discussed, so we might as well piggyback the information at the same time. Two birds, one stone. And most of all, let's, someone stated, I'm going to paraphrase someone, let's get it done, and we'll get this moving there, so Larry can go get his money for his project. So, let's get moving on this, folks. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So, there is a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, Beben Park Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Next item, Beben Park Recreation Center Boiler Plant Review and Thermal Energy Study. The purpose is to obtain council authorization to proceed with a more comprehensive boiler plant review and thermal energy study of this facility, rather than the initially planned and lower-cost basic boiler study. There's a plant, or there's a staff recommendation on page 30. Can we have a mover for the motion, please? Counsel Brennan? Seconded by Counsel Thorpe. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Counsel Bestwick.
Thank you. Just a question to staff. Mr. Harding, this is specific to Beben Park. Will the study be relevant to other properties that we have with similar? And I know that the study won't study other properties, but will we, will we be able to take this information and adapt, adopt to other properties?
I believe we will be able to, Counsel Bestwick. Again, that this specific studies is for these boilers, but the idea with our energy managers looking at all our different energy systems, so it'd be hopefully consistent with, at least help with the other, at least help doing the math or the economics of the other ones.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Subdivision Control Bylaw, 1989, Number 3260, Proposed Amendments to the Manual of Engineering Standards and Specifications. There is one delegation to the subject, and that is Mr. Leon Cake. Mr. Cake.
Thank you, Your Worship. Leon Cake, 59, 36, spoon away. Owner of Four Star Water Works with my wife, Christine Cake. I have 10 minutes, correct?
Correct.
Speak first on the WSC changes. Only a couple of comments. One of the things that the city, and I've had discussion at times with the city and the gentleman engineering, is regarding a backflow program in the city of Nanaimo, which we don't have one. We have no legislation in place, and we are doing some revisions, which you're going to be asked to approve tonight, or approve for July 11th, I believe, or third reading. And one of the things is regarding meter setters in your residential properties, which have a dual check, which acts as a cross-contamination device to prevent backflow. Now, in the various standards that we're looking at with the city, we're just going back to our typical drawing and adjusting it, where we use a curb stop, and we put a water meter in. And we have no, we have no check other than in the plumbing. So, that revision, I'd like the city to consider that, in regards to starting a program in Nanaimo on the residential end. We start today, and 20 years from now, all our new development will be well-established with cross-contamination in place. If the city needs the drawings, I can forward them. One of the concerns I have is that in your information report, it stated that there was consultation with the suppliers and the engineers and the community at large, with local engineering firms. I guess the question I have from the mayor of staff is, was there a list? How was the invite done to invite people to this process? Because I've canvassed the local suppliers that are within the city that was purchasing policy. None of them are even aware of these changes happening. None of these people have ever been phone-called or asked to put their input. But in this piece of documentation, it does state that they were, the suppliers were consulted. Now, when you do a waterworks review, you'd think that the suppliers who supply waterworks would be in that review. So, was there, the question I ask is, was there a list of people invited, or certain groups? Because our industry really didn't get invited. And these changes will affect our industry. That'll, July 11th, some of these changes, people are going to wake up and go, hey, apparently they won't let me use this now. Is that a question I can ask, or do you want to respond later?
That is a question to staff.
I just want to get an understanding of how this process started.
In terms of the consultation, so when we were here at council in March with the presentation, following that, we... following that, we sent letters out to essentially the plan holders of the Manual of Engineering Standards. So everyone that's on our list has a plan holder. We also sent notices out to all the engineering firms that typically do business with Nanaimo or in Nanaimo. We also sent letters out to all the developers that generally do work in Nanaimo as well. We had the changes posted on the city's website for, you know, more than a month. And the reality is, we get very little comment on the changes. It's not, it's not a document that is of wide interest.
Well, I find that quite odd because when I was last before council, I made that comment and I asked the city manager about, was there a matrix of, you know, captive addresses and people? Two days later, I got a letter in the mail in regards to the changes that were coming within the city. And I've been a manual holder for three sessions. So I was quite surprised that, you know, as the one that probably is before city council the most, talking about waterworks in the city of Nanaimo, because that is my passion. I do care about our water and our system and our, and our, our city. So I kind of find that odd. That's why I wouldn't be here if this was the pre-notification. As some of the suppliers, they have not been invited or have any information that this is changing, so, you know, you probably will hear later on. When I did submit something to the city in regards to some questions, no one got back to me. I was a bit concerned on that because I don't like coming before council. I don't like standing here addressing situations, but I need to make sure that everyone understands when you're voting on something that you have an understanding of the changes, because it does affect the development community. It does affect the suppliers. It does affect the manufacturers. A lot of manufacturers are not even aware of the changes happening in Nanaimo. As a distributor, I have spoken for them. And in regards to the changes that are going to take place, I have told those manufacturers they need to contact the city if they're going to be removed or there is a delay in getting them approved, because there is a process to get approved. There was a tender that came out for valves and fire hydrants. And the tender came out and the specification was as per what the city has in their spec book. And in the revised city specs, they called up stainless steel stems in the new revision, which is a good thing, because stainless steel stems don't break. Bronze stems do. Now, that tender was called and it was bronze stems. And my understanding now is, in order for the city to meet its own adjustments, that you're going to go back to bronze stems. I just want to ask that question. Is that, is that just a rumor? Or is that, is the city actually going to take its specifications back to bronze stems versus stainless steel stems on their gate valves?
Sorry, was that question about fire hydrants or valves?
No, on valves.
On valves? So city staff are sort of reviewing this matter. We've been talking to our colleagues in Vancouver and other jurisdictions about what they require and looking into the matter with the suppliers. At this point, it's looking like both stainless steel and bronze may actually be acceptable. But I believe we're still looking into that matter.
So why would you change that spec? You were going to change that spec to all stainless? Because obviously you've had bronze stems break in the city of Nanaimo. They have cost, you brought lots of money to probably repair. To me, it makes no sense to reverse that spec. That's just a comment. Every manufacturer now makes a stainless steel stem over bronze, just so you know. Now, I'm going to talk about another process that belongs with this MOESS. And that's a section in your specifications called the APL, the approved products list. And as you know, I've been here before talking about my water meter. And one of the concerns I have is this binder, which I submitted six years ago, started a process to get approved. A long process and a process now that, following what the director of engineering is, pardon me, the manager of engineering has referred to me that I need to talk to council now on this approval. And I have been at this for six years and I have a lot of documentation on this whole process. And I want to remind the city of Nanaimo, in your own water audit, 9.83% of the city's water is leaking. Leaking, okay? Uncountable. 50%, okay, 50% of the commercial users, the industrial users in the city of Nanaimo are oversized or under recording. So I just want to make that comment, because that means you're losing money. So in this process of this APL journey, I just want to show you how many people, how many staff members my correspondence has gone through, through freedom of information in a process that started off by sending something downtown and asking for a review. 71 people have been involved in looking, receiving, answering, discussing this issue. People I don't even know in some cases. So I have a few questions. Pardon me. You go dry up here when you speak for such a long time. Does the city of Nanaimo Engineering Department use Wikipedia as a source of accurate, reliable scientific information? Re-battery issue. This was considered a major drawback to the master meter water meter. The sources of information to back this up was listed as Wikipedia. In fact, Wikipedia is, by their own definition, information contributed by anyone who wants to post material. Their expertise is not taken into consideration. It is open to anonymous editing, but the city of Nanaimo Engineering Department used information found on Wikipedia to indicate that the battery used in the master meter was dangerous. In fact, the battery used in our meter is exactly the same lithium battery that is used in the census meter currently being used in the city of Nanaimo. I want to point these out because these are the frustrations that are going to lead to my last conversation today. Does the city of Nanaimo use the same approval process for all applicants? In the following, in following the process, Four Star Waterworks submitted a binder containing information about the product. One of the things requested by the city was a list of references, utilities or customers who use the product. We submitted a list of customers who currently were using the product and their contact information. Instead of contacting those customers who had been using the product and could therefore share their firsthand experience with the product on Vancouver Island, a city of Nanaimo representative contacted a U.S. distributor of the product. The city of Nanaimo's representatives, reason for approaching the U.S. supplier was that he wanted an unbiased opinion. He sought an opinion from a foreign supplier of the product instead of a Vancouver Island utility who was using the product. Now, I find that very disturbing in six years of doing this. Is six years an acceptable timeframe for product approval? We are now being told this time, after we have spent six long years trying to get fairness in this process, that the decision will not be made now. We are being told that council will be asked to establish some policy. Does this mean another six years for us in our quest to get approved? We have determined that there is no issue with our test meter. The issue has been with the false information, and I'll use this word strongly, sabotage of the meter or unintentional cutting of the wires.
Sir, you're now one minute past your 10 minutes. I'd like you to wind up, please.
I'll be comfortable in allowing the speaker to have more time. And if it requires a vote, I'm quite happy to put a motion on the floor that we provide the speaker with as much time as he requires.
Six years, Madam Chair.
We haven't voted on that. So we would call the question on that, giving Mr. Cake all the time he needs. All those in favor? Could you hold your hands up, please? Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Cake. It doesn't matter. There's five. Thank you. Oh, definitely. Since we haven't given it to anyone else and we've held other people to the time, that's the only reason I'm saying that.
No, I appreciate that, but this has been six years of my life. Poor communication, a very long email trail of concerns, insinuations that there are very, that there are very real problems with the test meter. To anyone who reads these emails, these lengthy communications seem to justify the city of Nanaimo's reluctance to accept our meter. However, once proven that these were non-issue, there was no corresponding trail to indicate the meter was just fine. The meter today is reading. I read it. I read it every week. I don't think this has been a fair process, and I'll say this from my heart now, as a long citizen of Nanaimo. I feel that I've been discriminated. That the city does not want this meter. Or Four Star Waterworks, or Leon Cake. And in this binder, through freedom of information, there are emails from city staff that have left our city in a vulnerable position. There are emails that were redacted when I did it for information the first time. And the second time, the same emails that were supplied to me had been adjusted. You cannot do that, but they were adjusted. Information was taken out. These were not redacted or unredacted. Information was taken out and then it was put back in. In this binder are comments that have left this city vulnerable. And it disappoints me. You ask anybody in this room what I do for this community, what my business does for this community? Six years. Fighting depression. I hear people put on Facebook about depression. I battle it. I don't let, I don't let, take charge of me. I deal with people that one time called me up and respected me. And then I look at emails where they try to manipulate me, make me look like I'm some sort of a villain, some sort of a shit disturber. And I'm not. I love Nanaimo, always will, always have. This binder is full of things that could cost this city lots of money. Put yourself in my position. What would you do? What would you do, city manager? What would you do? These people here, they know what they've done. They know what they've done to the depression that gives me and my wife. Damn you all. Damn you all.
Mr., or Counselor Kip, you have a question?
I'll move receipt of the delegation and I have some questions.
I'm sorry?
Move receipt of the delegation. Then I have a couple of questions.
Call the question, all in favor. Yes?
So, I'm well aware of Mr. Cake's complaints and a person of special interest and dealt with him for years. I'd like to know why it's taken so long for backflow. 2008, it started with backflow prevention and the Oak Tree Manor. I sent out questions in 2015 asking for more information. Still don't have those answers. Do we have a backflow program started now in Nanaimo? Question to staff. And why did it take so long after this job was pointed out?
Staff?
Yes, we have a program that's starting now. We're just in the process of implementing that program.
Eight years.
Yeah, I don't have an answer of why.
Why it took eight years. Okay. I heard earlier from Mr. Rosen that they consulted people around the area. So why would one of the staff go to United States and not go to the local suppliers? Well, it's not consistent, is what I'm getting at. I think I know my answer. The core review talks about inconsistency. Unbelievable inconsistency in the application of our purchasing and our rules. So you said you went to Vancouver or other places, and why would we go to United States? What would be the reason?
So just to answer the question there, so for the consultation for the Manual of Engineering Standards, which is the report that's in front of council tonight, that consultation went out to local consultants, anyone that's on the plan holders list, as well as local developers and so on. So the Manual of Engineering Standards is entirely a separate process from the approved products list.
No, I understand that. So, fine, thank you very much. What about the Wikipedia? Is that a typical reference point for council, for staff to review products? Wikipedia?
No.
And why was that used? I, you don't really need to answer these questions. I know where I'm going with this. 71 people on the email list was just getting spread out to everybody, every time, and names were mentioned about this supplier asking that. I've seen this information. It has put our community at a phenomenal position. And you see what it's done to that man? I'm really, like I said, I have gone, part of the review of the Roper report was because I went to VHA and asked about cross-contamination. And this corporation went after me for interfering with our staff by going to VHA on cross-contamination. Apologies should be due here to some people. I'm really disappointed with how this has continued and gone on. It just, we write out the bronze thing and then a day later, we change it to stainless steel. Days after the one thing comes out and when it closes, we've changed it. The core review pointed out to me very well that our products approval and our purchasing is in a chaotic state. We make it up as we go and I want that to change and I want it to change fast. And where it changes is here. This is where it changes. Where we set policy and tell them to do it and live to it. I'm really frustrated with this and my friend has been hurt and he's been insulted. There's even a thing when they said, how do we justify giving this contract when we used a different methodology? And you've heard it before, but you haven't acted on it. We haven't acted on it. We're trying to ignore it and it ain't going away. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Counselor Kip. Counselor Yocum?
Thank you. I just want to touch briefly on the delegate, on, obviously not an expert in this area as our staff and also the delegate, but I wish he was here to hear these words. I'm apologetic for my short time here. I don't know the whole six years. But also FOIs are ridiculous. I've had one on myself here, oh my God, comments, but nevertheless. I just want to echo the culture around here. When I started, it was absolutely absurdly wrong. But the culture, as we heard tonight, we've got a lot of good work happening, lots of happenings, and the council, majority of council are working together and Tracy's done a great job with the staff. And I don't think the next six years will be like the delegates' last six years. I can actually comfortably say that from what I've seen in this short timeframe.
Oh, sorry.
The culture on how we treat people since my time here has been absolutely wrong. And I'm being repetitive, coming from the First Nations world of politics to this, it's been night and day, but this is getting better. But how we treat people is not good enough. How we treat our citizens is not good enough. How we treat each other is not good enough. But nevertheless, we're taking a big hump and we've come a long ways in such a short window. The first year was hell. We're quite blunt and I don't think anyone on this table would not agree, would disagree with that. We're governing now. Some want to go back to that old pattern, behavior, which I am sure not going to participate in and can don't either. But nevertheless, the culture is changing. I want Mr. Cake to hopefully trust us on that and others as well in our beautiful city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Yocum. I noticed there's two staff. Mr. Goodall, are you wanting to speak to the issue? Okay, thank you. And Ms. Samra.
Thank you, Acting Chair. I just wanted to go on the public record that since arriving and working with Mr. Goodall and Mr. Rosen, we've endeavored to treat Mr. Cake with respect and respond to his lines of inquiry. I can't, having not seen the legacy, I call them legacy issues, they're things that happened before my time here. Those emails and what transpired in them, I haven't seen those, but I'd like to offer my apologies for the negative impact that those may have had on him and recognize that. But staff is here to work with citizens and with developers and with suppliers and treat them with respect and integrity, which they deserve. And I've seen Mr. Goodall and Mr. Rosen do that, so I'm happy that I'm working with this team now and will continue to work on these challenges as we move forward.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
I have to echo Counselor Yocum in a lot of his comments. The culture of the past is hopefully changing. I know for a fact that... I know for a fact that there are emails out there that exist on one person's computer and have totally disappeared from someone else's. It's called triple deleting. And that's one of the things I learned last year, that, oh, wait a minute, okay. I now know how to triple delete emails. It's also very easy to take an email and change it. And so if you get an FOI and an email is saying one thing and then you get that same email and there's differences, that's wrong. That culture is changing. I am thrilled to be sitting on this council. I ran five times and I am happier than a pig in poo not to have been elected the last four times. Because I don't think significant change would have happened back then. I see it happening now. And I'm going to support that change. And I will support people like Mr. Cake coming and so-called bitching about things. Because they are the people that are going to keep us honest and always have tried to keep us honest. And they need to be respected for what they're doing.
Thank you, Counselor Fuller. Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. I'll try to be as brief as possible. Counselor Kip alluded to the Core Services Review. And the information that's contained in there, for those people that don't know backstories, which of course, why would you know backstories and information? And when we have what I consider to be extremely valued members of our community, which every person that's in this audience and in this room that comes here is extremely valid and valued in your contributions to the process. It is really hard to come and stand before people and complain. It's really hard to come and stand before people and say, "I think I haven't been treated fairly." It's really hard to come before people and say things that you know that they're not going to like to hear and then not be fearful of a reprisal. Because as soon as you come and typically complain in public and you're a business owner in this town, or... The reprisal probably follows. And there's countless examples. And there's more people in all likelihood that would like to be able to have the courage that Mr. Cake has and the perseverance to spend a large portion of his life trying to correct practices and processes through his own personal experiences and expenses and reputation and credibility and integrity and all of those things that we take for granted and all those things that we're so proud to hold because all we have at the end of the day is your name. That's all you have. At the end of the day, you have your name. And you hope that your name has been well represented for the legacy that you leave for the future to come behind you. And Mr. Cake is trying to change that. Have the courage, have the will to come and speak openly from your heart about things that have happened or you would like not to happen to somebody else. So when he's speaking on behalf of himself right now, he's speaking on a far greater plane than just for himself. And I sure hope that we have the fortitude here not to force somebody in our community to come and have to have that conversation with us here in public. I hope. So we have lessons every day and I hope we learn a lesson that we wish not to have another person come to our podium and have to bear their soul through frustration and desperation like that gentleman just did. I know him extremely well, real well. I know what a person like that does for our community and has done for this community that people will probably never know because he's extremely humble. And every time he does something, it's not a photo op. We need more people like him.
Thank you. Next item is under Correspondence. And that's not related to a report to council. And it's with respect to a letter dated 2016 April 8 from Honorable Peter Fassbender.
I actually have... Your worship.
Pardon me? Yes, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thanks.
And that's with respect to receiving the update on the previous one? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
We had a delegation. We received a delegation. We have not accepted subdivision control bylaw, proposed amendments. We haven't done anything. So we need to do something with this topic. So we need to receive the update.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Bestwick. All right. So we need a motion to receive the update on the Control Bylaw Number 1989.
I still move.
Moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Brennan. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All who's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And the delegation has been received, I understand. Thank you. Next item, pardon me, is the Advisory Committee Commission Minutes for the Design Advisory Panel Meeting held May 26. Counselor Hong, thank you. Counselor Thorpe, thank you, to receive the minutes. Discussion, seeing none, call the question. All who's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Now, on to Correspondence. With respect to a letter from Honorable Peter Fassbender, Ministry of Community Sport and Cultural Development, requesting councils regarding requesting councils regarding the availability and provision of integrated transportation and accommodation services. Counselor Pratt, you wish to move the...
I would like to make a motion in regard to this correspondence. Should I be doing that under other business?
Can we receive it first?
Yes. So I would like to move that we receive the correspondence.
Thank you. Seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brennan, actually. So it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Thank you. In favor. So now the next item would be any business arising from the correspondence.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion in regard to the correspondence that council direct staff to arrange an information session with council and local stakeholders, such as the Chamber of Commerce and the Nanimo Hospitality Association, to discuss items contained in correspondence dated 2016 April 8 from Mr. Peter Fassbender regarding the provision of greater choice, convenience, and competition in the availability and provision of transportation and accommodation services.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Brennan. Thank you. And discussion. Do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I will speak to it. And that is that I believe that we need further input from staff and from those affected in the community regarding the issues that are highlighted in Minister Fassbender's letter. I don't think council can provide good input to that, which is what they're asking from us, without some more information from our community and from our staff.
Thank you. Counselor Bestwick?
Thank you. This was received April 15th. It's June 30th or whatever it is. It doesn't say on here when we're supposed to get back to them by. Is there a date that we're supposed to get back to them by? Are we going to get... I'm assuming that every municipality and regional district in the province of British Columbia is receiving the same letter. Are we going to get the feedback from every municipality's feedback? Are we going to see it? Are we going to get a summary? Is we going to get a dashboard? Are we going to get common themes from communities that sent in similar concerns? If we're going to ask the Chamber of Commerce, is the Chamber of Commerce asking the chambers of commerce around the province what they think about it? And whatever they think about it, we think about it. And if we don't, then we should. And what makes their opinion more right or wrong than somebody else's? Regional districts are going to have different opinions in rural settings than about Uber influencing or impacting their local businesses? Et cetera, et cetera. So it seems to me there should be a small city, large city, regional district, something that differentiates the information that would come out of a city of 100,000 people versus one that's got 5,000. Or is that even happening? I don't... So for me to have no deadline, are we going to discuss this in September at UBCM? Is this a topic that this city council is going to direct our mayor or somebody to go to UBCM and say, "This Uber thing, here's our community's feelings on that. This Airbnb, here's our feelings on that. Here's how it's influenced or impacted our community." Or are we just giving anecdotal stuff? That we're going to send our anecdotal opinions that might be the chamber's and not ours? It's asking questions. My bet is not very many people at this table in this room have any fricking idea what we're being asked to invest our time and resources in doing. So can somebody please be more specific? Tell us, give me five questions and we'll answer them to the best of our ability. Don't ask for our opinions. Because we don't have any. We'll have to go and ask other people. Chamber? The NVIA? We're going to ask other people for what our opinion's supposed to be. So I'd like there to be a little bit more specific direction from Minister Fassbender's office on something nobody in this room knows what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Samra?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess I'll offer a couple of comments. It's a provincial consultation on, I think, a pretty current set of challenges to some communities, maybe not necessarily in Nanimo with the Uber. But they're doing a province-wide consultation to see if they're going to get into the business of regulating it and what does that mean? And then that'll have impacts on local government. I spoke to Dale Lindsay briefly about it and he can give you a briefing off the top of his head of basically what Nanimo does now in terms of regulation and where there might be opportunities to step into that or not. So he's offered to do that. And I also reached out to the Chamber and to the hoteliers. And they immediately gave me their opinions. Obviously, there are different interest groups that would like to see certain areas regulated because they would be able to get taxation from that. So it's just to give some basic background information to council to assist you in forming or not forming any opinions and position you to provide that feedback back. I'll get staff to check with the ministry to see on the deadlines. I imagine if they're going out consulting on this, it'll probably be an agenda item at UBCM. So I can find out more information about that.
Thank you. Counselor Bestwick, in response to the question asked?
I'd just like to say, did we get a similar letter to this from the minister responsible for small business regulations and licensing about legalizing and licensing recreational marijuana? Did we get the same letter as this? "Hey, we'd like your opinion on how to legislate grow-ups, on selling of marijuana in your community, on how to go about licensing." What do you think about that? Oh, gee, sorry, we didn't get asked. But we're getting asked about... And how many of those do we have in town? Seventeen? Fifteen? But nobody asked us what we think about about that and where they should be or not be, or whether they should be licensed or not licensed. But anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Thank you. I note that Victoria received this letter and this request for Victoria's perspective and that their staff put together a report for them for issues to consider. This is... Fassbender's request is on, what does he call it? The sharing economy. So, and I think that probably is meant primarily for things such as Uber. And it's not permitted in B.C. at this time. It needs some provincial legislation to allow it. I think that it's appropriate that we at this level who regulate the taxis and et cetera to some degree, that we have our say in it. And whether the minister wants to take our specific advice or not, I think what he wants is some sort of temperature reading across the province on such things that are included in this sharing economy. I think we would be doing a disservice to the small businesses in the city whose incomes will be affected, one way or the other. And so we should participate in this and we should ask our staff to have a look at it and begin with the reports that other cities have done to give them an idea of the scope that the minister is getting back on the opinions of different cities. And he recognizes that urban and rural communities will have differing opinions and that's only fair.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt?
Thank you. I'd just like to add a little to my thought behind my motion. And that strictly is for information. I absolutely, myself, as a counselor, need more information on this. I do think it is something that our province is going to move on in the future. And I'd like to have as much information as possible regarding the impact of such things as Uber, Lyft, and Airbnb and how that would affect our community. And maybe it won't affect our community at all, but I doubt that. I think it probably is going to affect our community. And I would like to be, at least have some information to help me when the decision-making process finally is upon us, which probably won't be for a while as the province is just getting started on this, I think. I also, just in regard to other issues such as marijuana, there's no doubt somewhere down the line, we're going to get asked about that too. I think this is just something that happens to be one of the maybe, I don't know, lower-hanging fruit for the province right now where they see this as an issue that they really do need to get a handle on. And the more information we can get, the better. And that's simply what this motion is about, just to get information. Not to make any decisions, not to act on anything, but really just to really wrap our heads around what these issues are and are they going to have? Is there any potential impact? And I'm sure there are many people in our community that have an opinion on that.
Thank you. I see that the mayor of Parksville has raised some alarm bells with respect to Airbnb and zoning and safety and all of those different things with respect to private homes being used for the rental of accommodations. So they've got some real concerns about it up in the Parksville area. I look forward to getting more information from staff. Thank you. So we'll call the question then. All who's in favor? Opposed? Counselor Kip, are you opposed? Yes, Counselor Kip, that's noted as being opposed. Thank you. Motion passes. So the next item is delegations not related to a report to council. And the first one is Mr. Dennis McMahon. And it's regarding cultural facilities in Nanimo.
Dennis McMahon, 5471, Leslie Crescent. Talk about timing. The proposed strategic plan was on tonight and I think this presentation will fit in there. Your worship, council members, thank you for the opportunity. It's not often that seemingly unconnected events combine to create a valuable opportunity. To take advantage, one has to recognize such connectivity. And I'll explain later in more detail. But first, here's some background information. Five or six years ago, both the VIU and the Nanimo Art Galleries restructured and repurposed themselves. The effect was to remove the ability of local artists and art organizations to exhibit in their galleries, especially in the downtown core of the city. I emphasize, they did not create the problem, but rather brought the issue to light. For the first time in five years, the Harbour City Photography Club held this juried show. the first time in five years, the Harbour City Photography Club held its juried show with an exhibition open to the public. It was held in the VIU gallery, a venue that was affordable, but in a non-central location, and it was far from ideal and meant that only or primarily family and friends visited. About the same time, the Nanaimo chapter of the Federation of Canadian Artists held a major annual exhibition in the VICC. This was a much better location. That saw more than 600 visitors in a three-day period. However, the rental was expensive and not easily affordable to most local not-for-profit cultural organizations. In the recent Core Review, Nanaimo was compared for best practices in other cities, to other cities in B.C. of similar size and population. And if you Google "art centers" for any of those cities, for example, Kelowna and Chilliwack, you will find that they have state-of-the-art centers that reflect their city's dedication and support of the arts. Indeed, Kamloops already had a vibrant art center when their city recently proposed a new $38 million facility. Although the project is not going ahead at this time, they are reconsidering it. On the other hand, if you Google "art center for Nanaimo," you will only be directed to the Medical Arts Center. When local artists wish to exhibit, they must frequently seek venues beyond Nanaimo's borders, in Ladysmith, Nanous, Parksville, Qualicum, Comox, and even Victoria. Local artists have also rented studio spaces at the old schoolhouse in Qualicum. This situation is not in keeping with the city that prides itself in supporting the arts. In 2012, the city of Nanaimo developed and adopted a corporate strategy plan identifying cultural vitality as one of the four pillars of sustainability, and with a goal of balancing social, environmental, economic, and cultural perspectives for generations to come. I'm hoping this new strategy plan also recognizes those four pillars. Next, the city created and adopted a cultural plan for Creative Nanaimo 2014 to 2020. I think it's quite a thorough and excellently developed plan. Unfortunately, it hasn't been implemented to any great extent. This document identifies the strategies and outlines the responsibilities of the city staff for its implementation. Within this document is a section describing the need for spaces and places for art. I'll quote in part, "Identify priority additions or enhancements to cultural spaces and places, and incorporate them into the cultural planning process and the city's financial plan, and work to ensure affordable and suitable spaces for artists and cultural organizations." And despite these positive goals, Nanaimo artists still have no affordable or suitable space within the city. Nanaimo is the largest city north of the Malahat and is probably the only city that does not have a dedicated, publicly-supported center for the arts. Thus, the fourth pillar of sustainability, as identified in the corporate strategy plan and further developed in the cultural plan for Creative Nanaimo, has not been implemented. Page 51 of the Core Review recommends in part establishing priorities and developing targets for specific outcomes. The cultural plan for Nanaimo identifies needs, establishes goals, and assigns responsibilities, but therein lies a major part of the problem. As far as I can determine, goals and actions have never been prioritized, nor targets set or outcomes established. Recently, the mayor and at least one other councillor attended Showcase for Nanaimo 2020, and Dr. Ron Burnett of Emily Carr University emphasized the importance of the cultural industry that accounts for 3.2%, about $99.6 billion of the total GDP for Canada, more than mining and forestry combined. And further, 12% of the GDP is derived from spin-off industries. Therefore, it can be said that Nanaimo will benefit from cultural development in similar ways. Dr. Burnett continued, "We need to have places that people want to visit." And finally, the key to recreation and tourism is not to celebrate the natural environments to the exclusion of the cultural environment, it is to celebrate the integration of the two. In Nanaimo, how can we integrate the two if one of the elements is not supported in a meaningful way? And at the beginning, I mentioned seemingly unconnected events that come together to form opportunity. I suggest these events to be the restructuring of the Nanaimo and VIU art galleries that has had the unintended consequence of exacerbating the lack of affordable and suitable exhibition space, the creation of the cultural plan for Nanaimo 2012 to 2020, and, sorry, that should be 2014 to 2020, and the Core Review. Now, these events provide a wonderful opportunity to satisfy the needs of arts community in Nanaimo, as well as the fourth pillar of the strategic plan. Our issues could be resolved in three stages over, say, five to six years. Firstly, provide immediate exhibition space within the city core that is affordable and suitable. Secondly, as an intermediate solution, provide exhibition space and a temporary art center in a decommissioned building such as Woodlands High School that should be available soon for community use. Finally, the permanent solution could be the construction and opening of a purpose center for the arts, integrating it with the First Nations Cultural Centre. With such a vibrant arts community supported by a vibrant functional center, Nanaimo artists could flourish and contribute to the city's growth, prosperity, and well-being. And this could be a showcase piece for Nanaimo and a financial asset to the city. It would be, as Dr. Burnett stated, a place people would want to visit. On the first two, Nanaimo Arts Council is already working to resolve the first two issues and is in contact with your staff for advice and assistance. And I would hopefully and respectfully suggest that perhaps that could be prioritized a little bit stronger so that we can move forward on that one quickly. The third issue of a permanent solution is beyond the capabilities of the Arts Council and will require your commitment and involvement. I understand some discussion is already underway about land usage by the cruise terminal. Might I suggest this might be an ideal spot for a needed art center. I also understand that this committee of the whole, it does not make final decisions, but makes recommendations to council. And therefore, I ask that this issue be placed on council's agenda and that a committee consisting of representatives from council, staff, the arts community, First Nations, DNBI, NEDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and other relevant stakeholders be formed and tasked to create options and to bring recommendations to council for inclusion in your planning process and your financial plan. And I guess that falls in line with one of your priorities in the downtown south end of Nanaimo on the waterfront. As Kerry Slavens, editor of Douglas Magazine, said at the Showcase for Nanaimo, "It's easy to say it won't work. Instead, let's say, awesome, let's do it." Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, sir. I want to compliment you on the very well-researched presentation and timely as well. Counselor Beswick has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mearan. Echo the compliment from our mayor. Have you spoken to us before?
Sorry?
Have you come to this podium before and addressed us on topics of interest to you?
No, I came last, 7th of October, 19, or 2015, to the Cultural Commission, and I, it wasn't as complete as this, but I just appraised them of the lack of space within the city.
Thank you. The reason for my question is because I want to compliment you for, it's refreshing to see somebody new come to us and advocate on behalf of a greater purpose that we don't see on a regular basis. It doesn't diminish other people that we see more frequently whatsoever, and it's not intended to do that. But for me, this is a furtherance to how important it is that people pay attention to what's going on in our city, that they have an interest that they're passionate about, and they come. And this could not be a better, this could not be a better town hall meeting. This could not be a better opportunity to get your 10 minutes to come and be expressive about something that is important to you, that you think that this city should entertain and undertake. So for me, this is extremely meaningful for you to come and make this very succinct, thoughtful presentation for, on your first visit to us. And so there couldn't be a better town hall meeting than the 10 minutes that you just had to share with us. I thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no further questions, sir. Thank you very much. Motion to receive the delegation. Counselor Brennan, seconder, or Counselor Pratt? Any discussion seen done? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Holden Southward regarding a new vision for Nanaimo.
Hello, my name is Holden Southward. My address is 848 Inas Place. I guess this mic doesn't come any higher. Yes, for the new vision of Nanaimo, it's much related to my vision of Nanaimo eventually becoming totally self-owned and semi-autonomous, loyal to Canada, and self-reliant in agriculture. And I appreciate all the work you guys have done. And I know I say a lot of things you guys don't hear before, but I'm not here to pressure you guys to think my way, just something, what I do is, I'm just trying to press against a unipolar view to express a multipolar view, so that this is a plan for something of the future, because I believe our society is, our mode of life and everything and economy and that is rather archaic, and it's kind of keeping us very limited, maybe in an adolescent state. But anyway, the real plan, how you do it, is by allowing the community, I mean, it would be all volunteer to create a shadow government that would be based upon the values that I'm stating. And it would be complementary, not a conflict. It would be something that could help out, but it would have to start in small ways, where you'd actually have a, you'd even have your own land register. And this is the most important thing, is that keeping ownership of our land. That's really nice that, you know, there's an incentive for agricultural development in that. But the biggest obstacle for young people following in many of these people's footsteps, who are older, who have already purchased their land a long time ago with no debt, is that they are just stuck with getting in debt to start a small farm or anything like this. Maybe they're lucky enough to inherit it. And another problem is, too, you know, people in Vancouver, the real estate prices are, what, a million dollars, two million? I hear all sorts of things. But of course, it's an incentive for somebody just to, while the market's hot, they sell out and they buy here. So of course, you get big bucks for selling out your farmland or a small, you know, acreage or whatever that, and it's not being passed on to the next generations, you know. And, you know, it's sad to see, you know, young couples on the street. I mean, I've been doing some jobs downtown, construction jobs, but I sometimes I talk to them, like saw this one couple, they're sitting on the side, kind of looking for a handout. It didn't look like they're on drugs or anything, but I says, "Well, what do you think of my vision?" You know, you'd just be given just a permanent lease on a piece of land, and long as you take care of it, you grow food, provide for your neighbors, contribute to society, no debt, no rent. And they just love the idea. But the problem is getting from point A to point B, and that's such a huge, huge obstacle. And one of the biggest, and what's keeping this whole global economy really going is just more and more debt. In England and many parts of Europe, they're going into negative interest rates or zero, nothing down. But that's just keeping, that's just keeping the profiteers going. So basically, the land register, number one. We create our own, it would be, it would just be, the shadow government would have an alternative land registry, and also an elected council. It'd be more based on tribal means, where you'd have elders. But this land register would be very important in that when there's agreement and more consensus, we'd have to make the hard decision in giving notice that perhaps a couple of years or five years, that the land, all foreign land, will be repatriated back to the people. And it'll be a different type of ownership. It will be a sort of lease where somebody, as I said, they could, it's, they can own it, if they take care of it, they could pass it on to their children. It'd be part ownership of, it'd be sort of, you know, be a part ownership, partnership with the people, especially who want to grow food. And no more debt, because right now, all we're walking into is a massive debt bubble. And all that's going to happen is there's going to be more bank failures. In the end, the IMF is going to take over all the small banks, because just to exist, they're putting out just hugely risky loans. I did one job for one person out in the town, okay, this is the truth. This guy has been upgrading his property, and just because its property value has gone up so much, he's been living on his equity, just piddling around. And he's kind of growing up now, but now he's gone from $150,000, and they've given somebody up to $600,000 mortgage. These private, you know, mortgage companies are doing this, and this is hugely responsible. Now, the guy is having a hard time finding work, and this is, is, that's another thing. And so eventually, the market is going to have a crash, and it's going to be big. But the problem is, it's not the young people getting the property, it's the people who are waiting in line, the big rich fat cats. They end up buying it, the banks. So in the end, our childrens are going to be, the fact is, will be tenants in their own land. It's unstoppable if, unless we start the groundwork and be unified with a sensible plan that starts in small, small steps. So the backup government would, you know, just, you could even have an elected, you know, as I said, an elected council, but it would be harmonious. It'd be more of an elders' council. You can even have your own elected, you know, pretend volunteer elected sheriff that has the power to deputize deputies, and they can work coordinatively with the RCMP, do city work and stuff like this. Because anything you do, if you want to have your cake and eat it, too, you've got to live it, you've got to practice it. And also, bringing back industry. We don't need to go back to big world trade, but we've got to start making things. Instead of letting a place like Madill sit there and decay, where the foundry, you know, you can, you know, it'd be ideal for people to get together and revitalize that and start making our own pots and pans and, you know, glassware and all these sort of things, bringing back, you know, work, rather than having all these, you know, broken-down obsolete men walking around the street, you know, ladies, too. But it's mostly men, they're broken people. Because I work, when I work downstreet, downtown, I see it all the time. There, there's no real place for them. If they had a place, somebody says, "Hey, we welcome you. Can you help us out? There's a farm here, you can learn how to do something. You don't have to go through the big hoops to get a job. And if you don't catch on too quickly, we're not going to fire you. You're welcome, you can learn," you know, because, you know, there's always going to be people that are left on the side that don't necessarily seem to add up, and their spirits got broken. But everybody has a beautiful talent. There's no reason why people should be walking around depressed on medication because they're, you know, they have no place in life. And that's basically what's happening a lot in Nanaimo, you know. So, okay, the, and it's kind of a, I don't want to get involved too far, but yeah, so basically, basically, the repatriation of land is the long-term plan. But if they do not sell, it will be repatriated just by turning the pencil around and erasing their name and putting down a long-term, young couple's, Nanaimo resident, young couple's name on that piece of property as a permanent lease. Because, you know, you have, you know, it's nice to be compassionate and, you know, tolerant and stuff like this, but, you know, love has to be expressed with strength, too. We have to think of the future. That's called tough love, you know. And also even our own judicial system, because the way we've been, we've been kind of brought into a subservient attitude. And as I said before, the traditions of the past are very important, but some bad habits or patterns we need to overcome. And that's to think that we have to be governed over by a higher educated people, and whatever they say is right. So we can make, a judicial system, I would say, would start off with elected community people, that the community would, on their own free will, submit any minor grievances with.
I just need you to wrap up because you've got one minute.
Okay, thank you. And so that way, we can practice it so we can become, you know, semi-autonomous, because they've been, the judicial system, there's a lot of good people, but they've also been humiliating us, going against our will, our natural code of our coexistence. And that's why there's, you know, serial killers like Robert Picton sitting in jail alive, humiliating us, demoralizing us, when we know he alive, humiliating us, demoralizing us, when we know he should be dead. This is not just two guys getting in a fight, but they keep on, when they passed the optional death penalty, it went against 80% of the people, because the people far up, they have this high mindset that the people below need to be governed over and told how to think and feel guilty about saying something contrary. So this is kind of like regaining our human dignity, but also, and our self-respect. And it's a very serious issue, and I really congratulate you guys on all your work, and I'm not forcing you to think about this or make any, you know, or to take any actions on this, but just, it's food for thought, it's just so that...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Holm. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Q. Next item is Mr. Omar Karam regarding the National MBA Games being hosted by Vancouver Island University. And don't forget to mention that that's in addition to the BC Games.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. So on behalf of the National MBA Games Organizing Committee, we'd like to welcome you all, and thank you so much for giving us the opportunity today to speak with each and every one of you. We're really excited to kind of give some more information and insight to our city council of Nanaimo about the MBA Games. So we'll start. So today, we're going to actually kind of give a little bit of kind of overview about the BC MBA Games and National MBA Games. And just for those who may or may not know, VIU actually participated in the National MBA Games in 2015, and we sent a team of 28 students across Canada to represent the city of Nanaimo for the first time, of us sending a full-scale team. We'll never forget the moment when we were there, and our name wasn't announced. And ever since that moment, our goal was to showcase the quality of students and the high quality of education received at our university. We started the MBA Society, we hosted the first-ever BC MBA Games, which included UBC, SFU, Uvic, and TRU. And not only did we host the games, but we came first, and so that was an amazing opportunity for our city, so it was awesome, yeah. And then in 2016, this past year, we went there, we gave it all, and long story short, because I know I have a limited amount of time, we actually placed fourth in Canada. So first was McMaster, second was Ryerson, third was Shulik, and fourth was Vancouver Island University, and fifth was Laval. So definitely, the vision was met, you know, we actually represented our city proudly, and we're excited to come here today to let you know that there was an open bid to host Nationals. And we met with our coach, David Woodward, who is sitting in the audience here today, and members of our program, our director, and we said, we're submitting a bid to host Nationals. And again, long story short there, Vancouver Island University, we had all teams across Canada, all team captains across Canada voted from all universities, and Vancouver Island University will be hosting the National MBA Games. So what does that mean for us? Well, that means that 600 to 800 MBA students across Canada will be here on the island, and we have this unique opportunity for the first time in 28 years, that the games will be in British Columbia, and not only in British Columbia, but on the island. So today, our agenda is BC MBA Games and the National MBA Games, and first off, we'd like to give you a quick overview about the BC MBA Games that we hosted last year.
We want to learn.
We are passionate about business.
We want to work hard, but we want to play harder.
We want to build relationships. So how will we do this?
On behalf of Vancouver Island University's MBA program and the MBA Students Society, we'd like to welcome you all to the inaugural BC MBA Games 2015.
The team-building drumming experience was amazing. It got to break the ice with everyone, and everyone had fun.
The winnings are really important. I think the experience of teamwork was obviously on full display. The competition got pretty heated, but I think at the end of the day, we all had a great time, it was a great experience.
A platform like BC MBA Games, you get to meet so many, many people, learn so much more from each of these people and these teams.
Once we got here and once we heard a few of the speeches, we learned that this is a way for the BC and the West Coast schools to get to know each other, and then take what we've learned to make a stronger...
Rather than just my little class in Vancouver, I've already started to grow my network and kind of excited to meet who else is out in BC, not just in Vancouver.
BC MBA Games has given us an opportunity and a platform where we came as SFU, UBC, Uvic, TRU, and VIU, but what are we now?
To connect.
To inspire.
To impact.
Great, so thank you so much. That's a little bit of part of our presentation. We still have a bit of a presentation, and we're just going to try to stay within our time. If not, if we could have some extra time, that'd be great. Just to give you an overview of the BC Games, well, it's going to be actually held, since we won it last year, we'll be hosting it this year. So it'll actually be held on Friday, October 21st to October 23rd, Sunday. It'll be held in Nanaimo, British Columbia, and we're really excited that we have five universities confirmed, and we're aiming to get UNBC, so that's a group we're aiming to get, but we're really excited that, you know, we're going with year two. This is an event from Nanaimo, it was founded in Nanaimo, and we get to lead the MBA schools across British Columbia, which is fantastic. We'll move to, yeah. So the theme for the BC MBA Games, so last year, the theme was to connect, to inspire, to impact, and this year, the theme is a journey to new heights. So the idea is, how did we come up with this theme? The community partner this year is Childhood Cancer Canada. Essentially, what we're doing for Childhood Cancer, they gave us a story of a child, she was living with cancer, and she compared battling cancer to actually climbing out Mount Kilimanjaro, and that struggled, the struggle to reach for her climb or reach for the top. So hence, we came up with this idea of a journey to new heights. It's a, you know, a message that's quite applicable to everyone, especially as MBA students and MBA leaders in the community. And now, these are different components to the spirit event, we have a video challenge, a mystery event, there's a fundraising for the charity in advance. Last year, the BC MBA community, led by Vancouver Island University, raised over $10,000 for families living with autism and special needs. So that was a really, really great achievement for us in that way. Great, so part of the competition, you know, you have the fun components, but we do have the academic component, and we do have the case component, and it's really important for us, you mentioned this, to the members of council here today, that we have three case competitions in the BC Games: strategy, entrepreneurship, and the Pechacucha, something that VIU's internship program is quite known for. And when we look at these MBA Games and the opportunities that the MBA Games provides for us, it's an opportunity for us, and we look at it as a vehicle for change. You know, we have this opportunity for MBA students across British Columbia, across Canada, to analyze, you know, situations in our city, and then provide real recommendations on how we can improve as an organization. So when we look at it, you know, the MBA Games, we look at it as a vehicle for change. A lot of these students across Canada or British Columbia are coming to Nanaimo for the first time. We don't want to be that city that people just drive by through to Tofino or to Victoria. I myself am from Vancouver, and just to, you know, to see the amazing city that we live in, it's actually driven myself, and I know Dominic, who is our vice chairman, is from Germany, to want to stay in this city. But the main thing is, how can we effectively use this opportunity and utilize this experience for the benefit of our city? Next, we have the sports components. Last year, you saw the Dragon Boat Tug of War, and this year, we'll be doing the canoe races at Muffetown Sun and Park, as well as dodgeball. So this schedule gives you kind of a brief overview of what the BC MBA Games looks like. We will be housing, we'll be staying in the Coast Bash Hotel in downtown, we'll be using venues around the city of Nanaimo, such as the Golf Club, the Dingle Dock Club, we'll be looking at doing some case preparation at Square One, we'll be using camp, our VIU campus as well, as well as the Malaspina Theater for the spirit event. So there's a variety of areas of how we can showcase our city, but also showcase, you know, the venues and the beautifulness of where we live. And one thing we want to mention is, this is a unique opportunity for us to, you know, we have MBA leaders across BC and Canada who are coming here, so we really want to show them of how they can put their investment into this city, because they might start their own ventures, their own businesses, and we want to show, hey, Nanaimo should be your option, number one. Cool, so next, we have a little surprise for you guys.
Everyone, Faisal Kamisa here with you. You may or may not know me, I'm a sports anchor at Sportsnet in Toronto, and I will be attending the BC MBA Games hosted by Vancouver Island University, and I could not be more pumped. First of all, I'm so excited to meet all the MBA students across BC in Nanaimo this October. If you haven't signed up, you're kind of behind, you can head to BCMBAGames.ca to get in on all of this. I also couldn't be more excited about this year's theme, a journey to new heights. It's so fitting, first of all, for all of you who as MBA candidates are aiming to reach goals and of course, overcome obstacles along the way. All of you continue to climb life's proverbial mountain on your pursuit of all of that, and this just demonstrates that ongoing journey. It's also the most perfect theme for me, and I'm excited to share why as your keynote speaker. No spoilers right now, though, but let's just say, this year's community partner, Childhood Cancer Canada, is very near and dear to my heart. The countdown to October 21st is on, let the games begin.
Great, so now that kind of started the experience of the BC MBA Games, and now very quickly, we're going to do a quick run-through of the National MBA Games, if that's okay? So this is a really unique, is that okay?
You're, you're, you're over time already.
I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Keep going, they're saying.
You're good, keep going.
Okay, great. So the National MBA Games, so really excited to announce, the National MBA Games will be held from January 2nd to 4th. This actually commemorates the 150th year of Canada since Confederation. So what our team did, and our leadership strategy is, you know, we do things with meaning, or we don't do things at all. And so what we looked at is, we looked at the UN Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, we looked at the Truth Reconciliation Commission of Canada, and we've actually incorporated the calls to action within the Games activities and events. And we're working with a national council called the Circle, and we're going to be incorporating the Declaration of Action into the themes of the events, which is to learn, to understand, and to participate. So the theme of the event last year was to be more, and our national theme this year is Today for Tomorrow. And what that essentially means, as, you know, as MBA leaders in the community today, the decisions that we make today will have a sustainable impact on the future of tomorrow. Great, so again, the spirit component that we're looking at here, you know, we can go through that another day there, but the main thing that we want to let you know is the charity in our community partner this year, which is Moosehide Campaign. Essentially, what we're looking at is preventing violence against indigenous women and children as a theme within the MBA Games events. Great, case component. Now, in the national, it's a little bit of a larger scale, we have four main case components. Typically, the topics are strategy, entrepreneurship, marketing, and finance. Now, these are to be decided. As of now, we have three of these cases kind of been taken, but we've actually saved the purpose of this meeting to present to the city, if they are interested in getting involved in a case competition with regards to, it could be with regards to digital infrastructure, I know that there's some kind of works along with that, and there's a few other components that can be taken, but what we want to look at is, what are the needs of the city, and how can we, as MBA students and the MBA Organizing Committee, support you in your endeavors? And I think we look at these case competitions as a perfect avenue. You have 20 universities presenting to the city council or members of the panel, and they actually are providing their analysis and recommendations to you, and then the city council in that sense gets to actually ask the questions. And we can actually include in our package, our partnership, we call it partnership package, you know, one-page summary or a few-page summary, so that we actually have some data and some information that can be used for future reference. Okay? Sports events, you know, we have our sport events, the basketball, the volleyball, the dodgeball, and indoor soccer. And this is kind of the schedule for Nationals. So as you can see, Nationals is a little more complex here, we have a huge team involved at VIU and the students that are involved in this program and this event, but we're really excited. The venues, we really want to showcase areas of Nanaimo. We will be housed at the Tainamara, as it's able to house about 600 to 800 MBA students, but we will be showcasing us, you know, from downtown Nanaimo to VIU, to Arbutus Meadows, to D Bay Marine Station, to Milner Gardens. Great, so what have we come here today? We've come here to speak to about a partnership with the city of Nanaimo. Now typically, I can speak from experience of being one of the case competitions, we had to do a case on the Brampton City Hall, and what we had to look at was the office vacancies and the office vacancy rate that was available. So what we had to do is, we had to analyze the new business listings, look at the new business listings, look at the square footage that was available, and see what type of industries can be brought into Brampton. Brampton wanted to move from a manufacturing-based economy to a knowledge-based economy. So, you know, the recommendations that we kind of provided was that, you know, at the end of the day, that Brampton City Hall couldn't bring a large industry, and those recommendations actually helped with the strategic plan of the city. And, you know, we're looking again, as a vehicle for change, and as that handout is being passed around, you know, we kind of paid attention in the beginning of this meeting today about the strategic plan, and I think there's some really core values of how we can help meet your needs as a city, in particular with economic health, social equity, you know, active lifestyle, as well as cultural vitality. We can actually have the MBA Games and actually embodies those major community values. We also see how we can use the MBA Games as an avenue to hit council's priorities, in particular priorities of recreation, culture, sports, and tourism, as well as community wellness. So we really see this as an avenue for change, and we're really excited to have this opportunity just to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, that the city council is aware of this national event that is happening, and all the MBA students across Canada will be coming here. Our ask, and in conclusion, is for a partnership. And what a partnership looks like is, we are looking for $10,000 in cash sponsorship or partnership, and $5,000 in kind. And so for us to put on two major competitions for the BC and for the Nationals, there's, you know, funding required on our end to host these events, and we are part of the MBA Society of putting this together. But what we want to look at is, providing a case competition for the city council, where we'll actually have MBA students to actually write the case for you, and then actually provide the case to students to analyze, and we would like to showcase our city by doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that, that council may or may not be aware, both you gentlemen have graduated. Am I correct?
No. I have.
You have. Much of your organizing committee has graduated.
Yeah, so actually, our organizing committee is very interesting. Half of us are in place in the MBA program, there are a few of us who have convicted, and a few of us are staying back because we really believe what this event and what it can do for the city. So for example, VIU has been a great support in this, in keeping us here, and I know there are some individuals like Dominic, who would be on his internship, but he's postponing his internship to be able to be a part of the planning and to execute a wonderful event that really represents the quality of our city and what we can offer.
Thank you very much. The other thing was, you didn't include last year's fundraising at Nationals.
Oh yes, that's true. Thank you for mentioning that as well. So last year, we actually won the Spirit Award, we came first in Spirit, and we actually, VIU raised $32,000 out of $69,000 that was raised by all MBA schools across Canada. So we definitely represented, and, you know, MBA schools coming here will have a different impression of what they need to raise to place to the top. So we're really excited about that as well. Thank you so much for reminding us about that.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt.
Thank you. I'd just like the opportunity to say thank you to both of you. I met you the other night, and I'm very impressed with this wonderful undertaking that you've been involved in over the last year or so, and that you're bringing people to Nanaimo, that you've actually bid and won that ability to bring everyone here to Nanaimo for the National MBA Games. So I also want to thank you for ending this council meeting on such a positive note. It's been wonderful, it really, really has. So I applaud you, I really do. You know, it is so inspiring to see young people so enthusiastic and so positive about the future and wanting to be a part of that. So thank you so much for being here tonight, and I'm really hopeful that we can partner with you.
Great. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Yocum.
Thank you, really pleased and great energy and the champion you've been doing for our city. During your presentation, I quickly texted my partner, she's doing her MBA at SFU, and I said, how can big SFU not beat us at VIU here at the, what you just, the games you're at? They said that VIU came fourth in the nation, so nevertheless, there's some, already some banter going on who we're going to champion, but nevertheless, I don't know what our council is going to do with this sponsored package, but hopefully we're able to do, do, do what we can, because I think it's, we, we do got to step up to the plate, and our city has taken a, you know, what kicking of a bad reputation for the last numerous years, not just one incident, numerous incidents, and this is a great way to showcase, you know what, this place is great, because these are the bright minds of the future, and I would love to lure their brains and businesses and their monies to this city. So it's a great opportunity, and I hope we do what we can to maximize these two packages. And then it's exciting, I'm really pumped up for, I feel your energy, so I echo Wendy's words, so look forward to be able to support where we can. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Counsel Kip.
Thank you. The only disappointment I have is you have the Mann's Cup.
Oh, the Mann's Cup, actually, that's named after our previous dean. His last name was Mann, but M-A-N-N, those two N's.
Well, but the Mann Cup, M-A-N-N, is the national lacrosse emblematic of senior lacrosse in Canada, and we just had a celebration here for a team of ours that won it 60 years ago. Was it Michael Mann? Was that, was that with? Was Michael? Yeah, okay, thanks. I'll accept his on that. Thank you very much, your enthusiasm, great. I'd like to know if we could send this forward to staff? Do we need to require our motion to send it to staff for review and a quick report on what we could do and that? So I'd make that motion, or I guess we have to receive them if others don't have question, but I would like to make a motion to send this to staff just to give us some information and update on where it would fund from or any of those things, so I think it would be a good one to send forward.
We've got one more.
We don't want to lose this enthusiasm, but.
One more speaker, so if we could get that finished. Counsel Beswick.
Thank you very much. Huge compliments, amazing energy and effort and work that you guys and gals and your faculty. I can't imagine that you won't receive what you're seeking. I can't, I couldn't imagine it. And I'm certainly hopeful that when you get a chance to rule out your adopted city, that we're right behind you with all the support that you so richly deserve. Amazing work that you've done to date, and I can only imagine it getting better. I can't imagine it not being just absolutely fantastic. You're setting a mark, you're setting a, for everybody else to accede and aspire to. And I can see why you won, I can see why you finished, that's BS, I don't know who was judging finishing fourth, but boy, boy, they must be real good if they beat you guys, so congratulations, fellas. Really, really proud to know that you're so caring about this community that you're in. Thanks.
Actually, they came in third, but it was the Russian judge that caused them to come in fourth. So, motion to receive the delegation.
You guys failed the drug test?
Counsel Kip and Counsel Pratt. Thank you. Call the question, all is in favor. Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to staff for review of the request and how council could facilitate being involved in this.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Pratt, thank you. Do you wish to speak to it? Thank you. Okay, call the question, all is in favor. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And the next item is question period.
Hi folks, Kevin Storey, I'm still on Rossdale Road, I'll be quick tonight. Couple of follow-up questions through the chair for Ms. Semer. About a month and a half ago, we asked about the audit on the Colliery Dam construction costs, and you suggested to me we would see a report by the end of June, which is this Thursday, so how are we doing on that?
Sir, sir, that's not on the agenda tonight. A question period is for, a question period is for questions concerning agenda items, sir.
Is this a council meeting or is it a committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole.
Then a committee of the whole, non-agenda items are allowed, are they not?
For delegation, sir, but not for question period.
I can answer that question afterwards.
Well, then I'm mistaken, have the rules changed?
No, sir.
Well, then my questions are moot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
As you can see, the question period has thinned considerably since the beginning of the week.
Sir, can you come up to the podium so we can hear you? And name an address for the record, please.
Mr. Les Barkley, 222 Concordia Place. As you can see, the crowd has thinned.
Sir, can you address council?
Yes. Your worship, mayor. I have a question, but as a prelude to my question, can I bring this down? As a prelude to my question, I would like to refer to the official communication plan for the city that refers...
Sir, 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 it's not on the agenda tonight.
Yes, this question does address. Okay, I will, I will put it very clearly, your worship.
Sir.
May I ask a question?
You may ask a question concerning today's agenda.
Yes. This refers to Mr. Cake's delegation to council tonight. Is that on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I felt very ashamed of our city for the way they treated Mr. Cake. I would like to see the whole, whole thing, but I did notice the, the mayor, whose responsibility it is, according to the community charter, is to preside at council meetings and to provide leadership to council. The mayor was absent during the entire delegation presentation by Mr. Cake. I noticed that other councillors had the respect to exit but return before the end.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes. What were you doing during Mr. Cake's presentation? Question number one. Question number two, your worship, why did you not give him the respect of being present during his delegation?
Sir, this council, this council has chosen not to take breaks at periods during the meeting, as other councils do. So as a gentleman's agreement amongst council members, as you'll notice that council comes and goes during the course of the presentation.
Comes and, it comes and goes, back and forth, like other councillors did, but you did not...
Sir, sir, I'm trying to answer your question. As we'd been in the chair for over two and a half hours at that point, I took a break.
A very long break?
Sir, I took a break. There's no prescribed time limits on breaks, and the chair was being very capably attended to by the acting mayor. I witnessed most of Mr. Cake's presentation.
But he did not witness you.
Sir, I'm trying to answer your questions. As other members of council during the course of this meeting tonight took a break. Are there any other questions?
Temporary breaks, not during the whole delegation, which is a matter of leadership, presiding and respecting your worship.
Sir, do you have any other questions for council?
My question is to you. What were you doing during the whole time of the break, and why did you not give him the respect of being present? That is leadership and presiding at council meetings.
Sir, sir, I've answered your question. Are there any other questions?
Okay, a supplementary question. If this is the case that council does not take a break, I noticed at the last council meeting that council chose to take a break, a 10-minute break, why does council not do that at the halfway point during council of whole meetings that begin at 4:30? Why not take a break at 6:30?
We chose not to take a break at this meeting, sir.
What, what, would you consider doing that in future?
Certainly.
Would the mayor consider having the respect to return during a delegation to give the respect and leadership and preside at the council meetings?
Sir, sir, this is for questions. I've answered your question.
I've asked a question, you have not given me an acceptable answer.
I've answered your question, sir. Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Counsel Beswick, did you wish to speak?
I was going to, but I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to reference the fact that this council has previously agreed to take scheduled breaks. And if that is a reply to how this council will move forward, and if it needs a motion so that it's on the books that after two hours of every FP COW and regular meeting of council, this council will break for 10 minutes, then I think that we need to make that a, a matter of fact and not a matter of choice when we may or may not think we need a break or don't need a break, so that it would mitigate such incidents or issues that took place tonight. So I think the member at the podium makes a valid point, because we have taken breaks before, for whatever the reasons are. So I would suggest that maybe we bring this matter forward for a future council item, that we discuss regularly scheduled breaks at our FP COWs and our regular meetings.
Thank you. Counsel Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Barkley, I understand your passion. Appreciate the fact that you bring forward these type of issues. After your last presentation, I sent forward a thing about my town hall meeting, I sent you a copy of it, just so we can maybe take this type of environment away from the, the work of council and move it to an open session, a speakeasy, that type of thing. So hopefully that'll be coming through over the next little while, where we can maybe a session after this one, our, if we didn't praise everybody that came to the mic every time, we'd be quicker, and then we could get to something like an open mic. So I've taken that idea, and I, I appreciate the fact that, that you want us here in front of you when people are being passionate and talking, and I think it's sometimes, even myself, I got up sometimes because of my own feelings that I just leave and try and listen to it. We can hear the thing, and there is a screen in the back, we can watch when we're in the other room, so we do try and, and do what's...
I understand that, and there's a difference between, between the council and the mayor. That's the point I was trying to make, and I look forward to your initiative to increase councillor engagement, as councillor Hong referred to earlier tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.